Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 24th. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to our country?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McCoy?
Present.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Mayor Bill DeLaPeña?
We don't have any requests for a continuance of any public hearing, and we don't have any special presentations tonight either. So what I would like to do is go straight to public comments, Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the city council as a whole, and all documents for the city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. We currently have five individuals who have presented speaker cards in pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, public comments are just for that. Public comments not related to an agenda item. If you'd like to speak to tonight's agenda item regarding Measure E specifically, I encourage you to wait until then. First speaker is Karen Gorbak, followed by Robin Britt and Josephine Friedman.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Karen Gorbak. I introduced myself to you last month as the newly-elected Chair of the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. I'm here this evening to report that the COA had a very busy month. We began with our monthly televised meeting with Dr. Gregory Tajan, orthopedic surgeon from Los Robles Hospital, as our keynote speaker who taught us a bit about joint health and replacement surgery. Our next televised meeting will be Wednesday, November 1st, and will feature senior advocate Betty Berry from Senior Concerns, who will talk about upcoming changes in the 2018 Medicare regulations. Our November workshop meeting included further discussion about the city of Thousand Oaks applying to become certified as an age-friendly, livable community. I invited Director of Library Services Heather Cousin to join us for that meeting, to which she very kindly agreed. Then, under the leadership of Commissioner Ron Hagy, who is here tonight, and was joined by Commissioners Terry Maria and Donna Mortimer, we had information tables set up at both the Rotary Street Fair in Thousand Oaks and at the senior summit at Cal State Channel Islands. In addition, last week I attended a meeting of the Canejo Senior Resource Network, a committee of the Greater Canejo Chamber of Commerce. I was also contacted last week by Melissa Johnson, who works with Ramion Associates, the consultants who are working with our city planners to prepare a downtown core master plan, and we had a really nice phone conversation about the topic of livability. This afternoon, COA Vice Chair Loretta Allen, Commissioner Tony Git, city liaison Francine Sprigle, and I met with Adam Haverstock, Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Chamber of Commerce, and then with Jim Friedel, General Manager of the Canejo Recreation and Park District, to discuss what it means to be an age-friendly, livable community. Special thanks to Francine Sprigle, who expertly prepares all of our support materials and facilitates our attendance at all of these events and meetings. Finally, I mentioned in my remarks last month that we would be presenting a proposal to you this evening for the city to apply for age-friendly status through the California AARP. However, due to your really, really full agenda tonight, we are postponing that presentation until your December 12th meeting, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robin Britt, and then Josephine Friedman. It is actually, Robin Britt is first, before you, and then you.
Thank you. I'm Robin Britt. I'm the Executive Director of Community Conscience, and we own and operate the building located at 80 East Hillcrest Drive in Thousand Oaks. It's going to be 29 years old on December 4th of this year. And I just came to say thank you to you. We share a property line, and recently there's been a lot of cleanup of that area, that thoroughfare, and it looks very nice, and we really appreciate that. I also wanted to mention to you, two years ago I came to you and said that there was the possibility of a free dental clinic opening up in our building. Well, on November 1st, there will be a ribbon cutting for that. So yay, we're going to have free dental services for the Canejo Valley, and that's a fantastic thing that we can all celebrate. Nominations for King and Queen for our Mardi Gras Ball are open, and I brought some save-the-date cards for you, and also some nomination forms in case you can help us to find some really fantastic people to honor this year at our Mardi Gras Ball. And also, I would like to thank Francine Sprigle, our city liaison, for helping the nonprofits in the community to communicate with each other and to helping us to just do the very best we can for the community. So I want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Josephine Friedman, followed by Yvonne Brockwell and Nick Kidway.
Hi. I'm here to discuss a safety issue. Currently, the crosswalks in all of our supermarkets and public parking lots are painted navy blue. This is what it looks like. And at night, and in the rain, it's invisible. If this was done to help the disabled, it only endangers them more. As you age, you may get cataracts and various eye issues, and it's hard to see. If they do not want to, okay, if they do not want to take away the blue line for some legal reason, then could they at least add a white line beside the blue line so that we have a chance for our footing? And in many of the supermarkets, cars come very quickly around, and it's really, I think it's a dangerous situation that could be very easily remedied if the law made that crosswalks be painted white. I would also like to add that, again, in parking lots, there's a strip of cement called a wheel stop, and I would really appreciate it if they could be painted white. I myself tripped over one. My friend tripped, and she broke her shoulder, and many people have this situation. And again, if it was only painted white, this would eliminate a lot of falls for seniors. And thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne Brockwell, followed by Nick Kidway.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yvonne Brockwell, and I live in the city of Thousand Oaks. We regularly watch council and planning commission meetings at home, and there's a couple of items which are of concern. We realize that public speaking can be nerve-wracking, and that people may forget to clearly state the city in which they live. We would ask that council and staff take a much more vigilant stance in requiring that each and every speaker clearly state the city of residence in order to maintain the integrity of public record. Also, I kind of hate to bring this up, but it's been brought to my attention by some people who took photographs and pointed it out to me, and since they did, I've been seeing it myself, but we've noticed an increase in texting and the use of personal electronic devices behind the dais, and frankly, it doesn't look good. We hope that council members, planning commissioners, and other city leaders would refrain from holding private conversations during these open and public meetings. Private electronic conversations during open public meetings have been problematic in many cities in California. We would like to see Thousand Oaks rise above and maintain the integrity of the Brown Act. Also, I have three items I'm hoping to find clear answers to. One, is there a requirement for traffic analysis and studies for each individual mixed-use project proposed for the Boulevard? Two, does each individual mixed-use project on the Boulevard require an environmental impact report? And three, where may the public view a summary of city expenditures related to the Boulevard's specific plan since its inception? Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Nick Kidway is the final public speaker.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficent, most merciful. My name is Nick Kidway. I'm a resident of Nibery Park and Director Concerns Cities of Thousand Oaks. I've been coming here for a long time, but lately trying to warn you about doing something about the upcoming earthquake. You and I will not get an invitation to participate, and it will just come. This is Ventura County Star reporter, weekly paper. They have a complete story about the problems in South America. And then we had the earthquake in Mexico City. These things are just getting more and more, and just sometimes a small thing by the city can make a big difference because if the, there are generators in the gas stations, but if they don't have gas available for the generators, it will be no good. And a lot of times, people are busy, and they don't do anything about it. Yesterday, I had pointed out in the planning commission meeting that the LA Times on Page 2 on Sunday had a full whole section about the upcoming earthquakes. And doing things about the Boulevard, or nice painted colors, et cetera, are nice, and maybe to do things for the city, but health and safety is the main reason, and when that fails us, it will make everybody look bad. When this building was built, we were told that it will be great for public to come over here because it's so big, and that parking will not be an issue, and the first priority will be given to that taxpayer. But now it's over. Yesterday, when I came to the planning commission, it was completely blocked, and you could not get in. And today also, it's the same thing, two days in a row, and it is just not right. I mean, taxpayers are subsidizing these people so much. This is one of the advantages of having an arts hall, that you don't have to run out of seats like you do in other places. Then I would like to again remind you about taking away the rights of the people, that you cannot even have two signs of a political candidate in your front yard. It's completely unconstitutional. I was told that since the Supreme Court had made a ruling on content, something like that, so some changes were made, but nothing has been done about this. And the bad thing about this is, the thing is that the people who are law-abiding, they don't go out of their way to put more signs, and they suffer, whereas other people who like to break the laws, they do it because there's no teeth to the ordinance. There's no fines. Thank you.
Mr. Kidway was actually not our final speaker. We have now three additional speakers, Janet Wall, Tula Colovos, and Suzanne Duckett.
I wouldn't speak on 9A except I have a 5:30 a.m. flight from LAX, so I'm here to speak on 9A. My name is Janet Wall, and I've been part of this community for 32 years. Like most residents, I supported and voted for Measure E in 1996. The reason voters passed Measure E was because our community needed the growth rate of the city to slow down and reflect the values of the people who live here. Those same voters are counting on you to count them in on this decision. The staff report you have before you tonight is your first public review of how to reconfigure the density quotient of Thousand Oaks and get around Measure E. Though I've read the staff report several times, there seems to be a lot of information missing, which would allow us to better understand how the calculations were made. For instance, the staff report takes acreage and general plan residential categories and arrives at a residential baseline of 81,124 units density. If we consider that each unit is calculated at 2.3 persons per unit, you would necessarily arrive at the conclusion that the maximum desired population of Thousand Oaks in 1996 was projected to be nearly 187,000. The population of Thousand Oaks 20 years ago was less than 112,000, and no one voted for Measure E with the idea that a 67% increase was desired. In addition, the 81,124-unit number also presupposes that anyone that built at a general plan density lower than the maximum number is willing to part with the possibility of redeveloping their property at the actual general plan designation. We all know that experts for hire can pretty much take any factual information available to them and bend it to suit whatever conclusion is desired. It's not ethical, but it happens regularly. My request for each of you today is that you search your soul and decide just how badly you want to cheat your friends, your neighbors, and your community, who elected you from their Measure E guaranteed right to vote on whether this city will grow more residential units. As ethical city council members, you do not have the right to rewrite history. It's really simple. If you value your constituents, just put it on the ballot and let us decide. Thank you.
Tula Colovos, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
Tula Colovos, Thousand Oaks. I misunderstood about what the, what's going on? I misunderstood about the subject exactly, that was preposition E, so I'm kind of making a speech of the history of the way I see it and the way I want you to hear it of what's going to happen. I came to Thousand Oaks in 1973, 44 years ago. I was 32 years old. My husband, George, was 41.
Tula, could you speak into the microphone, please? Thanks.
Okay. I was 32. My husband was 41, and we had a little boy who was only 18 months old. We were young professionals with very, with every meaning of the world, and I'm saying that because I heard young professionals are coming. My husband had a PhD in chemistry and was working for Oquell International, the environmental department, and I gave up my profession as a chemist to bring up Chris, who was 18 months old. He grew up to be a very wonderful person. He got a PhD in chemistry, and now he's getting his residency at Cedars as a doctor. I never, never regretted what I did. The town was more like a village, only 29,000 people, and I thought I hated it. And then slowly, it grew on me. Its infinite beauty, its 100-year-old oaks, the blue skies, the bright yellow flowers of mustard greens blooming in the spring, the spectacular sunsets that I used to watch from the old city building. I was young, and the town became a part of me, and I grew to love it with a passion, and everywhere I could see the beauty, and I devoted a lot of time on its preservation. Now, 44 years later, this beauty has magnified. The oak trees are much older and bigger. The streets are lined with huge eucalyptus. The houses are beautiful, groomed, and the old folks rejoice at the way we guarded its dignity and its native beauty. And we all contributed a lot to the preservation. I'm sure there are hundreds of us just like us. Nowadays, I see young couples at the grocery stores that play with their beautiful babies. They all end up saying that they love this place. It is beautiful community, and they want their children to grow up here among its quiet, its beauty, and its safety. These people are the new young professionals that you guys are talking about, that they are moving here because they want high life with entertainment halls. No one has ever mentioned that they want more entertainment establishments, and their main idea is the quiet and beauty and the safety of this town, which provided good schools and activities for their children. They're not coming here looking for the fast life. After all, Hollywood is down the street, and we can go there.
Your time is up, Mrs. Colovos.
Please let me finish. I only have two lines.
Okay.
They're family people, and they want to see what we saw. From what I have observed, the only ones that want to develop the TO Boulevard are those that will profit and like the carpet art bangers of old, will flee to other places to destroy. Do not fall prey to their trap. You know, in the world of books, in all stories, only women of ill repute are looking to make money by selling themselves.
I think that's more than two lines.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
You get the idea.
Suzanne Duckett, thank you.
Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. I always like to start off with something good. Go Dodgers! Go Dodgers, dog! The last time I saw it, it was like 1 to 0, so hopefully, we're going to move in the right direction tonight. Thank you. Now I go with the bad. The other Dodger, the draft Dodger, the con artist, the sociopath, the immoral character of our president, and the not intact ego of that person. I want to thank three Republicans that I appreciate today, Senator McCain, Senator Corker, and Senator Flake. Those are three moral people who have the nerve to stand up against somebody who is totally immoral, totally immoral. Not amoral, but totally immoral. Now, takes me to the local. We're here, a lot of us are here tonight for Measure E and how to make sure that we're moving in the right direction on Measure E. We don't want to go around Measure E, which is what's going to happen now, tonight. You're finding a way to collect all of the unused, absolutely unused land development, everything that's been told to the people that they're going to get, that they've been up here in front of city council to get their allotments. You're going to move around those allotments. So if anybody's out there who has allotments today that they have not used, you better get your fannies down here tonight, because they're going to take those away tonight. So please get your fannies down here to speak up, because they're going through everything that hasn't been used, and they're going to come up with all of these unused allotments to use against you. Thank you.
That concludes our public comments section. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill DeLaPeña, in regards to a few follow-up items from public comments, appreciated the update from the Council on Aging and looking forward to their presentation coming up in December. Thanks again for being here. Those regular updates are really nice to have. In regards to the cleanup that we talked about, that the speaker spoke of from Community Conscience, I wanted to say a quick note of thanks to our Public Works staff, who've been working with our police department in helping to provide some cleanup to some homeless encampments that we had in that area, and I think it is making a difference. In regards to the speaker that had questions regarding parking stalls and crosswalks on private property, our Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon, I'm going to have him step out and chat with you a little bit about that, so we have a clear understanding of your concerns and give you any additional information. The speaker that had a series of questions regarding the public stating their name and city of residence, the way the Brown Act is written, that the public right to participate in city council meetings cannot, we cannot compel participants to provide personal information. In regards to projects on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, each project will go through an environmental analysis. The type of that analysis will depend upon the, on the project and its potential impacts. Staff would be happy to provide the speaker with additional information as needed. And then in regards to the Measure E questions, we'll obviously get to that at the next time.
Thank you. And our city attorney, Tracy Noonan, will address the social media.
Yes, thank you. City manager covered the comment regarding the public's, asking the public to provide their city of residence. But the other issue mentioned by the speaker regarding texting, just for the benefit of the public, texting does not constitute a Brown Act violation, and there's actually no law that prohibits anyone on the dais from texting unless you have a majority of the council that is texting on an issue within their subject matter jurisdiction. So I think that in the past, there have been some councils, LA City Council is the one I remember recently, that was chastised for the use of their texting because they were commenting on a project that was pending before them.
Thank you. We now go to the consent calendar, and I would like to pull Item 7B, minutes of the city council. And I'm looking for a motion for the remainder. Mr. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Move the balance of the consent calendar.
Please vote.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And for Item 7B, which deals with the minutes for the previous council meeting, I, in discussion with staff, would like to correct the minutes for May 9th up to reflect the discussion of Measure E, May 9th. All right?
And we've had our, had city clerk, based on a question earlier today, City Clerk Rodriguez can speak to that item. Go ahead, Cindy.
Madam Mayor, the minutes were prepared as we traditionally have prepared them in the past, therefore I am not recommending any amendment to those. Therefore, I am not recommending any amendment to those minutes.
Okay, I accept that, but I ask you to add the discussion of Measure E.
Just for clarification, the minutes, I went back and looked at it after our conversation. And the minutes reflect that council received presentations and that council adopted priorities. And actually, in those priorities refers to the requirement for staff to do the Measure E analysis, just like there was a requirement for staff to continue to find other housing opportunities and look at prioritizing Rams, permanent placement. It's identical. None of those priorities are listed in the minutes. They're attached to the priorities themselves.
I think they're listed as residential capacity.
Yes.
Right? Not as Measure E, as a result of the Measure E discussion. So that is basically what my signature is on there and I should have caught that. So that's my fault. So that is why I'd like to have those words, Measure E, just added to that if possible. Yes, can we do that?
We'll make that change. I apologize. When you initially asked, I thought you were referring to the minutes under 7B, which were related to the October 10th.
Oh, no, 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 no. May 9th. Okay, no problem. All right. Thanks. Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Item 7B?
I guess yes. Mr. Adams, was it you? See your name on there? Your name still on there?
Oh, I'm sorry. Move 7B.
And my vote went away. My vote, but it's a yes vote. Thank you. There we are.
That motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay. And let me see here, we have no public hearings. We do have the Department Report, 9A, which is the Measure E residential baseline report from staff. And before I turn it over to Mr. Towne and Mr. Gilli, Deputy Community Development Director, I just wanted the audience to know that this is a presentation based on a mathematical analysis of the baseline in 1996 and will lead to further discussion. From my perspective, I don't think we will arrive at any number of units tonight, but that will be the start of a discussion for future meetings. So go ahead, Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We are here tonight to discuss a recent analysis of the Measure E residential baseline that was conducted by staff pursuant to the land use element as it existed when Measure E was adopted on November 5th, 1996. This direction to staff to conduct this study came out of the City Council's goal-setting session in May of this year, which is reflected in one of the subparts of Priority 8, which states that staff should conduct a review of the residential capacity per the 1996 general plan. Before we talk about Measure E, it's important to talk a little bit about the general plan and amendments thereto. As I just mentioned, the residential baseline is based on the land use element of the general plan. So I'd like to discuss the general plan just for a short while because it is important as the foundation of Measure E. General plans are required by the State of California for all cities in the state. And what they do is essentially provide a long-term framework for the orderly development of a city. Thousand Oaks General Plan was first adopted six years after the city was incorporated in 1964. Therefore, the general plan was adopted in 1970. And the general plan essentially consists of three parts: goals, policies, and exhibits. These are organized into what we term elements. And these elements are very similar to books in a library. Each of these elements discusses a different topic. And displayed here are images of the covers of our four most recently updated elements of the general plan, starting with the housing element, which we updated in 2013, followed by open space conservation, and most recently, we updated the safety element. Tonight, however, we are going to be focusing in on the land use element of the general plan. This is one of those books in the library. And like the others, it is composed of those three elements I just mentioned: goals, policies, and in this case, an exhibit. And it's an important exhibit. It's the land use map. And it is shown here. And as the name implies, it identifies the approximate location of land uses throughout Thousand Oaks. These land uses are, of course, identified by color. Commercial uses, for instance, are shown in red on our general plan. And just a quick review of the image to the right here shows that commercial uses are by and large located either along the freeway corridor, the 101 corridor, or scattered amongst neighborhood shopping centers within our residential areas. Another very common land use is institutional, which is applied to uses such as the Los Robles Hospital, California Lutheran University, and public facilities like the East Valley Sheriff's Station. And those are shown in blue. Industrial areas are shown in gray. And if you look in sort of the upper-left portion of the land use map, you can see that these are concentrated in the Rancho Canejo area. That is the area sort of around Amgen and other biotech companies, as well as in other pockets along the 101 corridor. The green in our general plan land use map denotes parks, golf courses, and open space. And you can see that as a key land use in the city. It's been a longstanding council and community goal to preserve natural open space as well as create an integrated system of parks, as well as golf courses. Now, in terms of land uses, tonight, we are going to focus in on residential land uses. And these are shown in various shades of yellow to brown on this land use map. And they reflect the different types of housing types that we see in the community. Just a few are illustrated here to the left. At the top, an image of a single-family detached home. Such homes are typically located in what we categorize as the very low and low categories. If you look to the sort of mid and lower portion of this image, you can see the bright yellow is very low and the low is that golden color. Those are the categories in our land use map where single-family detached homes are normally located. The photo in the middle of this image is one of a condominium project on the north side of Hillcrest. Those are typically in the medium-density category. That is the olive color in the table and on the map. And then apartments, the lower photo, are typically located in high-density categories. And it's important to note here that unlike the other land use categories in our general plan, residential land uses, most of them, are categorized according to density. So if you note for these four categories of residential uses that we just described, those range from very low at zero to two units per net acre up to the high 15 to 30. And that's important as we discuss this analysis this evening because that's directly tied to how we implement Measure E. Now we segue into Measure E itself. And I wanted to start with the purpose of Measure E. Measure E was initiated and approved by voters in 1996 to essentially ensure that the city's infrastructure was adequate to accommodate planned growth and also to preserve the character and topography or landforms in the city. And this is a quote directly from Measure E. The ballot measure item that residents voted for had the following language. And it's important because the way that Measure E accomplishes that purpose, that purpose that I just mentioned, ensure that infrastructure is adequate, ensure that city character is maintained, landform is preserved, is that Measure E required that any changes in the net residential density or total commercial acreage as shown on that land use map, any projects that exceed that net density or commercial acreage must go before the voters. That is the heart of Measure E. Now, how is Measure E implemented? Again, Measure E is implemented through a net approach to any increases in land use densities for residential uses or areas for commercial uses. And as you can see in this quote, again, directly out of the ordinance, this refers back to the land use element or land use element exhibit that we just saw, the map of the city's general plan as it existed on November 5th, 1996. Measure E therefore operates on what is really commonly termed a net cumulative basis. The key here is that any increase in density, now I'm focusing on residential because that was the charge from council to staff, but any increase in density for residential in one area of the city could only be allowed if there was a similar or greater reduction in density somewhere else in the city. As long as there was no net increase, then we are in complete compliance with Measure E. That is how it's been implemented over the past 21 years. The key is that there's no net increase. You can have an increase in density in one area so long as there is at least that much or a greater decrease in density somewhere else. Now, in terms of how that process actually works, units resulting from a decrease in density are placed into what's commonly known as a bank or a pool. It's just basically a holding account until those units are potentially reallocated to a particular project in the future. So when we speak of measuring and its implementation, what we're really talking about in terms of those changes I just mentioned, increases and decreases in density, we're talking about changes or amendments to the land use map where we sort of started this discussion, the land use map of the general plan. What that denotes are changes of an area to or from one residential category to another. Now, a couple of examples of this from recent actions, relatively recent. One example of how units are placed into a Measurie pool is shown here in terms of the Silverado Memory Care Project that recently came before City Council. And if you recall, this was a proposal for a property located at the southwest corner of Mayflower and Moore Park Road. In this case, the applicant has a piece of property which is currently medium-density residential on the land use map. They would like to go to institutional, which is the appropriate land use category for a memory care facility. And so that would result, because it's a decrease in density, resulting units from this action being placed into a Measurie pool for potential future reallocation to a different Now conversely, another example, this is from 2009, are the Hillcrest Villa Apartments on Hillcrest Drive. And in this case, the property was primarily low-density residential, but to accommodate the apartments, they needed a medium-density category. And so in this case, they requested an allocation of units from the Measurie pool. So in this case, units went from the pool to this project because it was an increase, requested increase in density. Now, when we talk about general plan amendments, they just don't happen. They can only happen if they follow a prescribed series of steps. The very first step is initiation by City Council or pre-screening by City Council to basically give a project, this proposed conceptual project, either a green light or a red light. It can go forward through the process or it cannot. That is step one. If a project is allowed to go forward through the process, it goes to the second step, which is an environmental review. And that's as was asked by a public speaker earlier this evening, all these projects go through full environmental review and then planning commission review. And planning commission provides a recommendation. All general plan amendments must then come back to City Council for final action. So it's a three-step process for any general plan amendment. And in the case of Measure E, whether units are placed into a pool or out of the pool, it requires these steps. Now, again, City Council approval required for units into a Measurie pool or out. So there are multiple checks and balances all the way throughout this process. Now, these general plan amendments over the years have been conducted on essentially an infrequent basis. There have been 14 general plan amendments since Measure E was adopted. The majority of those put units into a Measurie pool. And five projects, such as the Hillcrest Apartments that I just mentioned, took units out of a pool. And currently, there are three pools. There is a citywide pool, which currently has approximately 300 units in it. There's also, if you recall, last year, you allocated some units from that pool into another bank or pool specifically for the Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plan. And that pool currently has 124 units in it. And these, by the way, reflect your most recent actions on proposed projects in the specific plan area. In addition to these two pools, there's also a third, which is a mobile home pool. And that's the result of the city's application of the mobile home exclusive category to mobile homes back in 2008. And through that action, the pre-existing baseline, the capacity for those areas was preserved in case any of those ever opted to change their land use going forward. We did see that in one case with the Canejo Mobile Home Park, which is currently being developed as condominiums. I'd also like to mention the scope of tonight's analysis as compared to analysis over the past 21 years. In the past, general plan amendments have been processed for selected projects completed since Measure E was adopted. And that's denoted with, or shown here with the yellow bar. So general plan amendments were processed for selected projects since Measure E was adopted. Units went into the pool bank or came out of same. The current analysis, however, goes toward a much more, in fact, a comprehensive analysis of the Measurie baseline. What staff did was calculate the actual residential baseline that existed on that land use map in 1996 when Measure E was adopted. This had never been done before. That land use map, as we saw in the opening quotes from Measurie, is constantly referred to, but we had never calculated that original baseline. That was an important part of staff's work. The other part was that we calculated the actual densities for residential areas throughout the city to better understand which areas may have been developed at a lower residential category than what was shown on the land use map itself. So the analysis that we're looking at tonight is a comprehensive one that involves a look all the way back to the original general plan, when Measurie was adopted, and all the way to the current. Why is this important? Why are we here tonight? Well, there are several reasons that come to mind. First is to ensure that voters' rights are protected under Measurie. As I mentioned earlier, a vote of the electorate is required if there is any project that exceeds the threshold that existed for commercial or residential capacity as it existed when Measurie was adopted. We cannot understand that exact point in time without looking at a comprehensive analysis of this measure. We are also receiving sort of continual pressure from the state to consider, to provide housing. The governor recently signed a dozen housing bills, all of which are geared toward basically trying to encourage, incentivize, force additional housing throughout the state. As a general principle, a comprehensive and full understanding of Measurie will enable us to best position the city in the context of that state pressure. And there are also related legal reasons for this analysis. In other words, for staff, for my In other words, for staff, for myself, to at some point have to tell an applicant that there are no Measure E units in a bank slash pool available for potential reallocation to their proposed project is a very important threshold decision because that requires that applicant to go and take that project before voters and place it on a ballot for approval, which is fine. That is exactly how Measurie was constructed. But I cannot make that decision until I have a full, and council and the community understands we have a full understanding of Measurie, because that's an important decision. At this point, I would like to transition the presentation to Peter Gilli, sitting to my right. Peter is deputy community development director, and he oversaw the, took a direct role in the analytics of this study. And so with that, I will turn it over to Peter.
Thank you, Mark. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I will be covering what the methodology was in determining the baseline as well as the findings of our analysis. And just for the sake of the vocabulary, we're using the term of a baseline, but there's a lot of other terms you could use interchangeably. It could be referred to as the residential capacity of the general plan, the maximum number of units allowed by the general plan, and so on. The primary source of doing these calculations would, to determine what the 1996 residential baseline would be, would be to go to the map, land use map that existed in 1996. We don't have a map of the land use element, a reliable one, from 1996. So the methodology we used was to work backwards from the 2017 map and then examine each of the general plan amendments that have happened since 1996 so that we end up at the same spot. And while the land use map on the screen shows all the land use designations, this analysis focuses only on the residential parts of the city, which are a subset of the whole area. There are eight land use categories on the general plan map that allow residential, but we found 95% of the units are in these four categories on the screen, in very low, low, medium, or high density. Each of them has a density range of number of units allowed per net acre. Using our computer mapping system, it's relatively straightforward to find out what the gross acreage is of each of the shapes of the very low, the low, the medium, and the high. But the general plan does not base density on gross acreage. It's based on net acreage, which is a smaller amount of area. Basically, it's gross acreage includes all the land, including streets, public and private streets. Net acreage does not count public and private streets, and that's specifically stated in our general plan. So the bulk of the analysis was actually going through all of the tracks of the city and making sure we took out all of the public and private streets so we weren't counting that. So we were able to come up with net acreages for each of the categories. Roughly speaking, on average, the net acreage is about 20% less than what the gross acreage was. Had we used gross acreage, we would be overstating what the baseline would be. So we take the net acreage, multiply it, multiply that by the higher end of the density range, and you come up with the number of allowed units in that particular category. In addition to these four categories, you need to add the other categories as well, which include our reserve category, residentially developable category, and a commercial slash residential category. Also, we have some specific plans that specifically allow a certain number of units in those plan areas. And then, as was mentioned earlier, we have Measure E pools. That needs to be added to the list. When you sum all of this together, you do end up with a figure of about 81,000 units. So that is the total number of units that the general plan, the 2017 land use map of the general plan, would allow to be built. But as stated, we need to know what the 1996 baseline was. So we went back and we analyzed all of the amendments since 1996 and found that there were no changes to baseline. Because as described, if there was a general plan amendment that occurred, units would either be moved into a pool or taken from a pool. But when you look at the whole amount, it would stay at the same baseline amount. So our analysis of all the general plan amendments since 1996 is that the baseline that existed in 96 is the same as the baseline in our current general plan. So once again, that's in the, up to 81,000 units. We then looked at the comparison of what the general plan allows compared to what's actually on the ground. And since we had data for 1970, that being our first general plan available, we included that in this chart. What you can see is between 1970 and 1996, the baseline, which is the darker color, grew. Grew by about 16,000 units. But then in 1996, when Measure E goes and takes effect, between 96 and 2017, the baseline stays the same. It doesn't grow. And that is because in order to make it grow, you would need a vote of the people, and such a vote did not end up happening in this timeframe. So the baseline between 96 and 2017 stays the same. Looking back at the units that were built on the ground, it's interesting to note that in 1970 was about 14,000. It increased significantly between 1970 and 1996. Roughly 29,000 units were built in that 26-year period. But then the 21 years between Measure E and today, about 5,000 units were built. So since Measure E was passed, the baseline has been maintained and the rate of housing construction dropped. Now, in 2017, once again, we have 81,000 units that the general plan theoretically would allow being built and about 49,000 that are actually on the ground. That means theoretically, our general plan allows 32,000 additional units. Now, the majority of these unbuilt units are assigned to residential areas on the land use map that were built at lower than the maximum allowed. And so we analyzed that and mapped it, and that's shown in the light blue. So these are tracks, are residential tracks in the city that were developed less than the maximum allowed. And that is fairly common. It's common in Thousand Oaks and statewide that not every development is going to be at the maximum. So it's not unusual that there is a lot of light blue on this screen. So just for clarity, imagine property in the high-density range. The general plan allows it to be between 15 and 30 units per acre, but imagine an apartment complex happened to be built at 20 units per acre. So it is below the maximum. It is still in that category, though. It's above the minimum and below the maximum. So in general, those are, there are no general plan amendments that can be done to address those units at this time. Now, there's a different category that we found, a subset of the light blue, which we made dark blue, represents about 1,000 acres that were actually built at a density that would put it into a lower category. So this is the example of a site that maybe is in high-density but is built at medium. And there was a case in 2013 on the Ventu Park Road Project where a developer had land that was in the high-density category but wanted to build it at the medium-density range and did build it at the medium-density range. And the city processed and approved a general plan amendment to change that high-density land into medium-density and put the difference in the baseline for that site into a Measurie pool. Now, using the same approach, the city council could choose to change one or more of the blue areas, dark blue areas, I'm sorry, to a lower-density category, making those units available for reallocation. If council chose to do that to all of the dark blue, that would equate to, just mathematically, equate to 5,000, about 5,400 units that could go into a pool. Now, it's important to note that the 5,400 number is not in addition to this 32,000. It is part of that 32,000. So if council chose to take a portion or all of the 5,400, it would not increase the 81,000. It would represent a part of the unbuilt. So that's the end of the calculation part of it, and I will shift it back to Mark.
Thank you, Peter. I just wanted to make some concluding remarks with regard to the process that was followed for this study, as well as the actual results. In terms of the process, the study, in staff's opinion, does provide a comprehensive analysis of the residential baseline that existed on the land use map when Measure E was adopted in 1996. It further identifies the potential units that are accessible for reallocation through the general plan amendment process. This analysis is completely consistent with past city council determinations, actions on Measurie, no deviation. It is consistent with the language in Measurie that allows units to be placed into a sort of temporary holding pool for potential reallocation elsewhere. Again, that goes back to the fundamental language of Measurie itself. And nothing that we are discussing tonight would in any way mean a change in how general plan amendments are processed. If you recall that diagram that I showed with the three blue dots, every GPA would still have to go through those steps of initiation, environmental review, planning commission recommendation, and then finally, city council action. In terms of the actual results, as Peter's mentioned, the math sort of is what it is. This is a mathematical geographic exercise. It did reveal that 5,400 units are theoretically accessible for reallocation through general plan amendments. In terms of the practicality of such a number being built in the community, as your community development director, I can tell you that that amount is very impractical to accommodate in the context of the city's growth, some portion perhaps, but given the advanced state of the city's development, that's comparatively a large number. I also would like to reiterate that city council has full control over the Measurie pools, full control through the general plan amendment process. As I mentioned, your action is required to initiate a general plan amendment and to conclude it. It cannot happen in any other way. And finally, that this analysis, in staff's opinion, provides that comprehensive analysis that has been needed, that is warranted, to ensure a full compliance with both the letter and the intent of Measurie. In conclusion, staff is recommending two actions by city council tonight. First is to receive this report, and second is to direct staff to return to city council with recommendations and guidance regarding those units that are potentially available for reallocation. And with that, Peter and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Town, Mr. Gilli. I appreciate the very thorough presentation of a complicated mathematical formula at which you arrived for the, at the baseline number. Of course, it is unfortunate that it's taken 20 years to get to this, but it was long overdue. We do have questions by council, and we will ask you questions before we open it up to our 21 speakers who are here this evening despite the Dodgers playing tonight. So thank you very much for taking an interest in the way that your community develops for the future. All right. And again, as I said, tonight, at least I can speak from my perspective, we're not going to come up with a number. I mean, obviously, we have to give staff direction. This is now an open discussion where we ask for feedback, and it will take a while to come to a conclusion. Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would 100% concur with the mayor's comments tonight. In terms of what council's dealing with tonight, it's unfortunate that I think this has been inaccurately protected or covered in the local press with respect to some major change in our general plan or some major change in Measurie, 100% inaccurate. I think you could hear from the report tonight, this is a mathematical calculation of what Measurie, which is approved by the voters in 1996, actually says. That's all it is. And subsequent action by the council somewhere down the road, that may or may not result in any future development. But tonight is a report, as the mayor points out, that we have not gotten for 21 years. For some of you in the community, you may remember that I wrote Measurie. I was the author of Measurie in 1996. None of the members of the council were on the council when I wrote it. I wrote it with the specific intention for two reasons. First, there was a legitimate question on the part of residents of Thousand Oaks 20-plus years ago about overdevelopment. I thought it would be a good idea to put that in the hands of the voters. And so I wrote a growth control measure that basically said you can't change a general plan without a vote of the people for residential and commercial. Now, there's a reason why I didn't include industrial. Without getting into specifics of general plan, because industrial deals with jobs. And we were very concerned essentially about overgrowth with residential and a proliferation of commercial. And that's what Measurie addressed. We never did a calculation in terms of total number of units. And the example that I would give is, many of you heard over the years about a ring of open space in the city. We have a ring of open space, and many of you have probably heard the term 15,000 acres. We have about 15,000 acres of open space. What you haven't heard is how many acres do we need to complete the ring of open space? We've never counted them. That doesn't mean the ring of open space doesn't exist, and that doesn't mean we're not interested in acquiring all that open space. We've never counted those acres. Tonight's report is very similar to that. We never did a total comprehensive count of Measurie, and we've done that today. My question to you, Mr. Town, to start is, why have we never done a comprehensive analysis like the one we're providing to the council?
I think for a couple of reasons. First, as I mentioned before, Measure E was adopted, of course, in 1996. The first project GPA that resulted in units being put into a Measurie pool was not until six years later, in 2002. Therefore, there was not a great need early on, and that first deposit, in fact, it was from the Western Plateau Preservation Plan. It deposited almost 400 units into the Measurie pool. Since that point in time, the pool amount has fluctuated, but it's always tended to have several hundred on average at the end of each year since then. So there was not a great need to calculate that original baseline. Also, what we did was we looked at and followed that net cumulative approach. So starting at a point of zero, mathematically, we tracked all of the general plan amendments, increases and decreases of density to ensure through that process that there would be no net increase in commercial or residential baseline. What we're doing tonight, though, is looking back and calculating. What we're doing tonight, though, is, is looking back and calculating that original baseline, uh, and also in part because we have the technology to do it today. Would have been very difficult to calculate back in 1996. Uh, but now with modern computing software, it's much easier.
All right. The second question I have deals with the methodology. Uh, you briefly talked about, uh, and actually you went into detail of how you went about doing it. Could you, uh, you also, I think, alluded to the fact that this had come before the council on isolated terms, going back to, I believe, 2001. There was actually a council committee, I believe in 2005, that looked at Mejere, specific aspects of it. Um, and at that council committee, uh, which I think the mayor was also participated in, and, uh, Mr. Wilson, and then I think Mr. Ferris was on the planning commission and one other planning commissioner, they came up with three options recommending to the council how, um, the calculation should be looked at for a specific, um, in a specific incidence. Um, could you briefly go over, uh, that recommendation, uh, for the benefit of the public? It's option two, I believe. And really more importantly, because this occurred back in 2005, um, share with the community that that opinion, that calculation, that process, that methodology is the exact same methodology that you've used tonight, you just applied it citywide going back to 1970.
Right. So there was a city council subcommittee, uh, formed in 2003. It studied Mejere, um, and it looked at a lot of what we're talking about tonight, and it came up with three options for city council consideration, it, all of which address this idea of, um, potential decreases of density in one area and put those units into a pool and potentially use them elsewhere. The three options were that you could require that there be both a decrease and simultaneous increase to comply with Mejere, which is difficult from a practical standpoint, but that is one potential way to approach Mejere. The subcommittee also identified the idea of a land bank where this capacity would be temporarily stored for reallocation. And the third was the same pool idea, but with a time limit on how long units could basically, uh, exist in that pool. Those three options were provided to city council. City council opted for the number two option to allow creation, and this was in 2005, allow creation essentially of a pool to temporarily hold those units as, as long, again, the key, and I know every, and I've said this before, but the key always is that there's no net increase. And, and that was the direction from the city council, and since then, that's a, that's the direction that we have, we have followed. Hence, those 14 general plan amendments that I mentioned earlier, those were all done in complete conformance with that, that, uh, direction.
Okay. And that is a segue into my next question. If you could go to page nine, the graph of the staff report. And put that on the monitor so the community can see what we're referencing. That's the one. You commented that in 2005, the option two, the committee's recommendation, um, was consistent with the intent of Mejere, the spirit of Mejere, the language of Mejere, the legal interpretation of Mejere, and essentially said no net increase. And I want to refer you to the, the chart you have there, uh, and again, I want to have you walk through the baseline total units going back to 1996 was 81,000. And the baseline in 2017 is 81,000. There is absolutely no change. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. If one was wanted to go farther than 81,000, that would require a vote of the people, uh, for a specific project, obviously, but if it took us over that baseline, that would trigger a vote of the people, and not only would council have to approve it, but the voters would have to approve it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, because this is complex stuff, I don't expect people in the community to be following general plans and densities and numbers and all those things. This, this is complex stuff, but to boil it down is, the number that existed that the voters voted for in 1996 on a measure that I wrote has not changed one iota in 21 years. There is no change. Staff just counted. That's all that has occurred. And any insinuation or misrepresentation that we're somehow adding units just simply is inaccurate, and the numbers speak for themselves. The calculation and methodology the staff went through is the exact same methodology that was conducted back in 2005, independently by members of the planning commission and other council members. I also think it's instructive, going back to that slide, if you could. 1996, 43,300 units. 2017, 48,505. I think you commented that in a 21-year period, there was really a growth rate of 5,000 units. Can you compare that to the average growth rate in other cities in Ventura County?
I, um, can't compare those numbers specifically, but our growth rate has been below the average for Ventura County. And I would just note that if you, if one looks at the, the bright green bars in this, in this exhibit, you see a marked decrease in growth post 1996. As, as staff previously mentioned, there was a significant amount of growth between 1970 and 1996. Post 1996, post Mejere, there had, the capacity has not changed. You can see a very modest amount of growth during that period. So our growth tapered off directly after Mejere was adopted, and it stayed very, very modest over the past 21 years.
Uh, this seems rather obvious, but from a professional planning standpoint, uh, by the way, Mr. Town, I believe you were employed by the city of Thousand Oaks and you were actually a member of the planning department when Mejere was, uh, written and staffed out and, uh, the legal analysis was done, you were actually part of the staff?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and you've obviously been with us all the way through. Is it fair to say that, uh, given your kind of tenure, your experience, your observation of Mejere when it was first, uh, proposed, through its, uh, legislative action, through the vote, through its application, it's worked essentially as it was designed?
Absolutely.
One more question, I think I have a question for the city attorney. Those remaining 5,400 units, would it be legal for council to put those, to put that to a vote?
Well, Mejere doesn't require it. Again, Mejere, the 5,400 units are the units that were actually voted on in 1996 by the voters. So to require a vote on this would be kind of antithetical to the rules of Mejere themselves.
Right. Finally, let me just, for clarification purposes, some have asked, will, will there ever be a vote on Mejere? And is the, the guy who wrote it, I can share with you, I hope not. When I first wrote the, the measure and it was approved by the voters, I said then, and I'm going to say it now, uh, the, the idea was because of the risk that a developer would have to take, going to the people to amend a general plan for increased residential development or commercial development was such a risk with development costs, no one would ever take that risk and try to get a general plan amendment through, not just the city council, but the voters. So the answer to the question is, will there ever be a vote? I certainly don't know, but I, I highly doubt it, simply because of how it was authored. Some may ask, well, uh, is it legal? And the answer to that is yes. The reason that there's a vote of the people is at the time, the city attorney, Mr. Sellers, advised me that in order for it to pass legal challenge, there had to be a legislative act, a remedy for the general plan amendment. And fortunately, a legislative act by a vote of the people meets that standard. So whole idea was, it was really irregardless who sat on the city council. You could have five people that owned development companies. If you want an amendment of the general plan passed Mejere, you had to go to vote of the people. And that hasn't changed in 21 years. As the mayor pointed out at the very beginning, uh, tonight's report is a mathematical calculation. That's all it is. There hasn't been a single unit added to Mejere in 21 years. There will never be an additional unit added to Mejere that would be illegal, that would be outside the language of Mejere. I hope tonight's hearing clarifies that issue, and as folks come up and comment on that, I just wanted to be clear on what council's dealing with tonight and clarify maybe some misinformation you may have read, uh, in social media and the, and the papers. We are not adding an additional unit, not a single one, to the Mejere requirement, the Mejere threshold of 81,000. Can't happen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Um, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. The, um, units, when you showed us the slide, if you can show it again, 61,000 units in In the seventies, the entire general plan was downzoned. Do you recall when that was, Mr. Town? When planning went through the plan, through the general plan and downzoned?
Well, the, the 1970 general plan, the, the original general plan that was, that was created through extensive outreach, et cetera, um, it, it actually showed a capacity of 65,000 units. And we actually went through an analysis to confirm that number, and we did. Since that time, the capacity, you can actually see in this, in this chart, it increased from 65 to 81,000.
If we could see the chart again, it would be great. We don't see it right now on TV. Thank you.
Sorry. So what's, what's really interesting, and I think informative about this graphic, is that, again, if you look at the dark bar on the left, that was the, the capacity of the land use map, that, that map with all the colors on it, all the residential combined, summed up to 65,000 units. But between 1970 and 1996, over that 26-year period, the capacity of that general plan map actually increased. Now, that's, that's important because that, that means that there were general plan amendments to increase the overall capacity by 16,000 units. Now, at the same time, there was very rapid growth. In fact, that's about 1,000 units a year between 1970 and 1996. And then it tapered off over the past 21 years to only about 250, a little bit less than 250. So it dropped dramatically between those two periods. So in response, I, I'm not aware of a specific downzoning per se, but clearly these numbers indicate that there were general plan amendments between 1970 and 1996 that increased the capacity of the general plan and very rapid actual on-the-ground growth.
Thank you. Now, looking at these numbers, a baseline of 81,000, that's a number that residents didn't have when they voted on Mejere. That number we only now know because you have done the analysis. And you have stated tonight that the difference between the existing units and 81,000 is 32,000 units. Can 32,000 units truly be built in the city of Thousand Oaks?
No.
No. Okay. Um, so is it fair to say that the high-density ranges or the density, residential density ranges were somewhat unrealistic when we evaluated a baseline of 81,000, when in fact, uh, that many units can never be built in Thousand Oaks unless you build up, but our guidelines exclude that?
I, I think the best way to look at the 81,000 figure is really sort of, uh, twofold. Again, that is the number based on this straightforward mathematical analysis that the land use map itself dictates. There's, there's no interpretation, there's no, there's no modification of anything. It's simply what that land use map that I was talking about earlier dictates in terms of potential capacity. Now, as Peter mentioned, that 32,000, the difference between the number of units that we actually have in Thousand Oaks and that, that capacity, well, there's a difference of about 32,000, but that's because 81,000 in a, in a very real sense is a theoretical maximum.
Correct.
Now, there's a portion of that 32,000 that potentially is accessible through general plan amendments, which denote that you have to go from one category to the next lower category. That's the only way general plan amendments work. The majority of that 32,000, as Peter mentioned, is based on projects that developed at a lower density than, than the maximum, but within the appropriate range for that site. Those projects, the majority of that 32,000, that reflects existing projects, and it reflects existing projects that, that didn't change categories, would never be potentially accessible through a general plan amendment. So getting back to my twofold response, one is that the number is based on, on the land use map itself, and second, that it's a theoretical maximum.
It is theoretical, but it is not practical, because unless we build up or build in the open space for which we have laws that prevent from building, we will never have 81,000 units total in the city of Thousand Oaks. And as a result, there will not ever be a Mejere vote, because 81,000 is a hypothetical, theoretical number that can never be reached in practicality.
That, that's true. I, I would only, I would only comment that, that as was just discussed, a key part of Mejere is that, again, it established a residential baseline. It said by definition that that capacity, that baseline that existed in 1996 can never be exceeded, can never be exceeded. That's why, without a vote, of course, that's why the bars, the dark, uh, green bars are the same in 1996 and 2017, because that, that baseline, as Mejere is exactly written, can never be exceeded. So the 81,000 may be theoretical, but the real practical part of Mejere is that, is that the threshold that existed in 1996 can never be exceeded. That's reflected in our analysis.
And, and I wouldn't disagree with that. What I am having a little bit of a problem understanding or accepting is that when we are working off of theoretical zoning and theoretical numbers, uh, such as the dark blue numbers on the map, if you can call it up, the dark blue numbers, and I think there's one area, Caneo Oaks, that was truly, uh, built in a much lower density zone, how, if we're speaking theoretically, how those numbers can then actually become reality?
So, now I'd be happy to, to speak about that. So the dark blue in this exhibit shows areas in the city that were developed at an entirely lower density land use category. The, the largest area there is the, by and large, the Caneo Oaks area. Uh, by the way, we're not talking about any rezoning or any changes to the Caneo Oaks area tonight, just to allay any concerns. Uh, but that area was designated as low, is designated as low in the, on the land use map, but it was developed at a very low density. So Mejere allows consideration of changes in category through the general plan amendment process. That's how we've done it in the past, as Peter mentioned and is shown in this exhibit. That's exactly how it was done for the Venturi Road project that added over 200 units into the Mejere pool. That went from high to medium density, as, as he mentioned. So what, what these dark blue areas denote, just based on math, are areas that were developed at one entire land use density lower than what they are shown as on the land use map. So the, the blue areas is also a sort of mathematical amount, a, a hypothetical amount that council can consider for potential general plan amendments, totally subject to your control, for potential placement into a Mejere pool and out. But these dark blue areas do not denote new growth. They, they allow you to consider through the general plan amendment process, potential placement of units into a pool for later use.
Thank you. And I have looked at our housing element just to see what areas there are left where we could build thousands of units. we could build thousands of units. I'm doing this hypothetically, of course. And according to our housing element, we only have a few acres or plots of land available where we could build up to a total of about 704 units. So this is our latest housing element. So with having that information, why would we consider, I mean, again, hypothetically speaking, consider adopting 5,400 or allocating 5,400 units when our housing element shows that we can theoretically only build 704?
So, right, important point. So the housing element looked at the capacity for growth based on existing vacant land and underdeveloped land. And the 704 is part of the actual number. The actual number is around 1,600, 700 is an important part of it. But we looked at underdeveloped land, projects already in the process of potential development, looked at vacant, and looked at projects in partnership with affordable housing providers. But that 1,600 unit figure is based on vacant and underdeveloped land. Measure E, on the other hand, is looking at potential increases and decreases in density at different locations in the city. By and large, if you just drive around our city, you notice that most of the vacant and underdeveloped land is generally in the vicinity of the 101 corridor, you know, within a reasonable distance of both sides of it. So, you know, we're not talking tonight about changing the neighborhoods that we all know and love, you know, throughout the city. But the analysis is accurate. It is what the land use plan shows and how projects were actually developed in Thousand Oaks. We've never had this information before.
No, I'm not disputing the number. I'm just questioning the practicality of building 5,400 units in the city of Thousand Oaks and where would they go? And if our housing element shows that there really isn't any room, plus our infrastructure cannot support 32,000 additional units at all, and it wasn't built for 81,000 units.
I would agree. I think we have to recognize that there's a very practical aspect to what we're discussing tonight. There is certainly, you know, room for growth in certain areas, as I mentioned, you know, areas that are undeveloped, vacant, et cetera, potentially densities are higher than are there today. But under Measure E, the only way that that could ever occur, again, I know I keep saying this, but if there's a decrease in the density somewhere else in the city to allow that increase in density elsewhere.
So Measure E expires in nine years. We saw a chart that said that 5,000 units were built between the year 2000 and 2010, although the majority of those units, 5,400, were built from the year 2000 to 2006, and almost nothing or very few units were built after the year 2006. So really, with Measure E sunsetting in nine years, theoretically, 5,400 units could be built by then and the whole thing will be moot, correct? Unless it's renewed.
Sorry, unless it's renewed. But yes, this analysis shows that potentially there are up to 5,400 units available for your consideration. From a practical standpoint, that's a, you know, the city would have somewhat difficult time accommodating that amount of growth, just based on where we're at in the city's development and its progress over time.
And we also have Measure SOR, for example, that is somewhat of a downturn also perhaps to developing more land or building more housing. So it's not solely Measure E, but also SOR may have contributed to that as well as the downturn in the economy, a reason why after 2006 hardly anything was built.
Yes, those are other factors. I didn't mean, I mean, Measure E, I think, as I stated, I think absolutely met its goal. There were other factors at play at the same general time, so I'm not discounting those, only underscoring the importance of Measure E in and of itself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Town. We do have Mr. Adam next, who would like to ask questions?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm glad you mentioned SOR because that is a very significant growth control measure that's been passed throughout the county, including Thousand Oaks, and it does protect open space and farmland around the 10 cities and make sure that they don't blend together into one giant mass. And then here in Thousand Oaks, of course, we have Measure E, which protects growth within the city. So Thousand Oaks has a long history of growth control and growth sensitivity. And it says to me a lot that we built 29,000 units from 1970 to 1996 and only 5,000 units from 96 to now, which says to me that Measure E is working. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not had one increase in the net allowable residential density that would have required a vote.
That is correct.
So of the 14 general plan amendments we've had since 96, not one of them triggered a vote. Not only that, but they actually identified surplus units, if you may, that would be put into this bank for reallocation, correct?
That's correct. There was always a surplus in the Measure E pool.
Yeah, which I think shows the sensitivity of the council to growth and the foresightedness of Measure E and how it really has worked over the last 20-odd years. And, you know, as far as, which doesn't surprise me either, but considering that Thousand Oaks has the lowest population per square mile of any city in Ventura County, which also speaks to the sensitivity of growth here in this city. You mentioned, we talked about the 5,400 units that had been identified. Number one, that doesn't mean 5,400 units are ever going to be built, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So I think that's an important point. And to put that in perspective, what 5,400 units is, if you all recall, Dos Vientos was about 2,500 units, if I'm not mistaken, maybe 2,600, on hundreds of acres of land. Well, 5,400 units would be two Dos Vientos, dos Dos Vientos, if you will. And this city does not have hundreds of acres of land to put in two more Dos Vientos. If you look at, maybe related to mixed-use projects, which we've been talking about, by my calculation, that would be about 50 or 60 mixed-use projects. The Boulevard cannot accommodate anything like that. We're looking at two at this point, two mixed-use projects. So when you say it's improbable that these units could be developed in the city, I think you're absolutely right, and we just don't have the capacity, or the will for that matter, to do that. I mean, would you agree?
I would agree with that assessment.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you could almost go as far as to say improbable, if not impossible, just for a lack of space. I mean, suburban sprawl in this city is over. That was decades ago. We're done with that now. The only kind of building we can possibly do is infill projects, and they are certainly not going to require that many units. So what we're being tasked with tonight as a council is to give staff direction about these 5,400 units and how, you know, we go about using them or not using them, or would we put them in the bank for reallocation? That's what you're looking for, correct?
Correct. Staff is looking for a direction from yourselves in terms of how you would like us to approach those units that are potentially available. Direction that you provide tonight can help us do our job and potentially bring recommendations and guidance back to you for consideration at a future council meeting.
Right. And that's the discussion that we'll have tonight. And as you said, Mayor, I doubt if we come to a number tonight, but we'll get the discussion started. Thank you.
Exactly. And just to reiterate, the reason we have not had any increase in the baseline is because physically it's impossible to reach that 81,000 unit. That is why I'm having trouble basing the mathematics on a number that is really truly hypothetical because it cannot physically be accommodated by the city of Thousand Oaks. So that was my concern. If there are no further questions by council members, then I can start calling our 21 speakers with Matthew Fineup, Betsy Connolly, and Rick Lemo. And you have three minutes.
More than half the speakers are in support, so isn't big enough. My name is Matthew Fineup. I'm a resident of the city of Ventura. I'm also the executive director of the Center for Economic Research and Forecasting at California Lutheran University here in Thousand Oaks. And my comments are mostly about the economic context for the information that's been presented to this council. But I did want to start with one quick thing that sort of struck me about the actual calculation and the numbers that were discussed. And that is that even if 5,400 units were built, it's striking to me that Thousand Oaks would have still developed at 33% below the 2017 capacity. And in fact, if those 5,400 units were built, you would still be 17% below the 1970 capacity. And I really think that means you've built well below allowed density, and I think there's economic consequences to that. And I wanted to talk about sort of the economic context for this discussion. So data released less than a month ago from the U.S. Department of Commerce indicates that Ventura County's economy shrank by nearly 3% in 2016, led by a loss of nearly $1 billion of output in non-durable manufacturing, much of that right here in East County. Together, 2014 to 16 represent the slowest period of growth of any three consecutive years for which we have data. That's worse even than the three years, including the financial crisis and the Great Recession. In 2016, for the 14th consecutive year, more people left the county in search of economic opportunity elsewhere than came to the county in search of opportunity. And the lack of housing and the lack of opportunities for growth are the driving force of households and employers that are leaving the community. Younger working-age adults actually represent a disproportionate share of that flight from our community. Despite adding jobs on net each year, the county's labor force is declining. For four years in a row, at the end of the year, there were fewer residents of Ventura County who had a job than there were at the beginning of the year. And what that means is that even though job growth is positive, the jobs that are being created in the economy do not pay enough that the person occupying the job can afford to live in our community. And as a result, according to the Census Bureau, 120,000 people cross the county line each day on our local freeways as they sort between home and job, in many cases, driving in from lower-cost environments to work in low-wage jobs here, or, in my case, and in the case of my wife's, driving out of Ventura County to find a job elsewhere that pays well enough to live here. So one of the major drivers of the community's woes is a lack of housing. And I trust local employers when they tell us that in their latest press release regarding a major downsizing or relocation. So I just encourage you and all those gathered here today to heed this data and the recent performance of the local economy as a kind of wake-up call. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Betsy Connolly, followed by Rick Lemo.
My name's Betsy Connolly. My husband and I moved here from Simi Valley in 1989. We came for the great schools and for the unique sense of community that the Cuneo had then and still has today. I'm a member of the Cuneo Valley Unified School District Board of Education for the last nine years, and I came here to speak to you about one of the impacts that a lack of affordable housing has on the school district and on the city. The CVUSD is currently the fourth-largest employer in the city, and our young teachers live in nearby cities because they cannot afford to live inside our city limits. Housing costs are high, the number of units available are few, and I hope that as you balance competing concerns tonight and in the weeks going forward, that you keep in mind that our employees and others just like them, who live outside the city of Thousand Oaks, drive in and out of our city every day. They add to our traffic while we miss out on having them as residents, as homeowners, as families who would plant their roots here and who would send their kids to our community schools. As an employer and as the community, as the county's largest school district, affordable housing is important to our stability and growth. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Connolly. Rick Lemo, followed by another school board member, Pat Phelps.
Good evening, Mayor. Council Rick Lemo. I live in the Newbury Park section of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here tonight representing myself, not speaking on behalf of any company or any organization. Tonight, I hope you understand with all due respect that I'm noting there is no substantive decision for you to make. Over 20 years ago, our citizens voted for Measure E offered by then-council, or I guess by citizen, Andy Fox. I applaud council for asking for a true analysis, an assessment of what Measure E really says. No fuzzy math, no boogeymen, no games. Thanks to hard work of staff, their analysis is spot-on. So let's deal with the facts. We've been deluged with fake news, and I'm sorry, the press made that poor choice instead of doing their homework in regard to this story. One of the fear tactics that we hear, that we must be careful not to become the San Fernando Valley. Thankfully tonight, that concern should be, never be raised again. And the reason is that as of 2012, the population of the San Fernando Valley was 1.7 million people. And as of today, Thousand Oaks' exact population is 132,365 people. So it is absolutely, positively impossible for us to ever become the San Fernando Valley. The analysis, according to the staff report, details the maximum number of units available to be built in our city. The fact is, the 20-year-old law speaks for itself and tells exactly how many units can be built. Quite frankly, as a person who doesn't play poker very often, the cards speak for themselves. You don't have to know the game of poker. Now let's deal with the cold, hard facts about what our citizens are saying. Housing costs are high in our area. For the most part, inventory of housing stock is low. While that helps us all enjoy pretty good property values, we hear over and over again, there's no place for our kids to live when they become adults. No place for empty nesters to move and thus make our homes available for the next age group of younger homebuyers. This has caused Thousand Oaks to become, and I think this is the most shocking fact we will hear tonight, Thousand Oaks is the oldest community in Ventura County as far as average age of our residents. This does not bode well for our family, our friends, our corporate citizens, and most importantly, for our future. Congratulations tonight on having no right to make a decision. We did that when our citizens voted for Measure E. Congratulations that you have been entrusted to guide our infill and last-construction efforts, with hope for our kids, our folks looking forward to becoming empty nesters and enjoying life, and for workers we try to attract to our city, that they can begin a life cycle that they can enjoy here as long as we have. Thank you. And by the way, the Dodgers won tonight, 3 to 1.
Thank you for the update. Well, he said, "I did." You spoiled it. All right. Amy Commons, and I'm sorry, Mrs. Pat Phelps, from another member of the school board, Cuneo Valley Unified School Board, and then Amy Commons and Tina Fregoli.
Thank you. As the mayor said, my name is Pat Phelps. I'm a 30-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I've served on the school board for 19 years. I'm not here representing the school board, but I'm definitely here out of concern for our schools. The future of our school district is tied to the future of the city. As the city ages and reaches buildout, the student population will continue to decline. And our neighborhood is a good example of that. On my short cul-de-sac, 10 houses, we have a net loss of 14 students, and all of us are still living there. For the district, we need a housing plan that allows for seniors to move out and young families to move in. If there is no plan to increase this available housing, the school district needs to face the reality of declining enrollment. Our best efforts to attract out-of-district students may help the student population, but it only adds to traffic in the city and contributes nothing. but it only adds to traffic in the city and contributes nothing to the community. We hope that as you consider the future of building within Measure E, you will consider the importance of keeping the school district informed and remembering the profound impact your decisions can have on our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Commons, Tina Fregoli, and Chase Rashid.
Thank you, Mayor De La Peña, members of the council. Mark, Peter, thank you for the excellent presentation. It was awesome. I think that 1,600 number is our sweet spot. So I don't know about many of you, but my children growing up here--first of all, Amy Commons, a member of--I work at Los Rubles Hospital, representing them here tonight, vice president of community employer relations, lived in the community, this beautiful community for over 40 years. So I don't know about you, but my children who were raised in this community, I often saw, as they were teenagers, their eyes would roll back in their heads, and they would say, "Oh, my God, I can't wait to move out of the bubble. Oh, I can't wait to move out of the bubble." Well, now, what do they say as grown adults, graduates who have excellent jobs? Mom, do you ever think we'll be able to move back into the bubble? I love the bubble. I loved being raised in the bubble. I want to raise my children in the bubble. And I hear this from so many of their friends, so many members of our community, and so many parents that, you know, take great pride in this community and raising their children here. They're graduates of CLU. They're graduates of Pepperdine University. They're graduates of Yale. They're graduates of Notre Dame. They're graduates of Stanford. They have great jobs. But guess what? They can't afford to live in this fabulous community. One of our nurses, that unbeknownst to me, I ran into last week. And he came over and he gave me a hug, and he said, "Amy, I just want to thank you. I've enjoyed working with you so much." I said, "Robert, where are you going? What are you doing?" He said, "You know what? I was born in this hospital." He's one of our star nurses. "I was born in this hospital. I went to Thousand Oaks High School. I went to Moore Park to pursue a career in nursing. I went on to Cal State Channel Islands to further pursue my career. I've had two children in this hospital. I can't afford to live in this community. Robert's last day will be this Friday. He's moving to Idaho." And many of the students that we just talked about, and their parents are upset and angry, too. They want to see their grandchildren grow up, you know? So I have every confidence in members of this council and members of the voters in this community. We're going to do the right thing. Thousand Oaks and the Canejo Valley is sacred to all of us. So I have every confidence that we're going to see this through, and we're going to fight for what is right and fight for our community. We're fighting for our elders, to make sure that we're taking care of them as they are an aging community. We also have to fight for our youth and, you know, a proper development. So I hope to welcome Robert back here someday. I'm going to leave you with this one quote that I look at and I read every day, and it inspires me. "It's not the strongest of the species that survive, nor the most intelligent that survive. It's the one that is most adaptable to change." Charles Starwin. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Fregoli, Chase Rashid, Yvonne Brockwell.
Hi, my name's Tina, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I've come to speak at council meetings a few times. Each time, I'm here to make the same request. Please respect our existing rules. I'm urging the council tonight to please respect Measure E. The community voted for Measure E because they wanted to preserve the character of our city. And we voted for these council members to represent us. What the staff has proposed today totally goes against Measure E in a few ways. Most dramatically, to quote Measure E, it would alter the character of the city and place an unacceptable burden on the city's topography and infrastructure. Reallocating units appears to be a move to get more units on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. If the staff numbers are correct, dwelling units in our city could increase by 40%. I'm sad to see this effort by the city to work around the specifications of Measure E and try to bank thousands potential units for developers while attempting to avoid a vote of the people. According to this staff report, the land use element shows my neighborhood as low-density residential, 2 to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. So let's say, according to this report, we could have three units on our property, and we have one. The city staff thinks they should be able to take two units and offer them to a developer. I say, "No. You may not have them. I'm using my units exactly the way I want to." We have pretty good rules here, and that's why Thousand Oaks has remained a beautiful, wonderful, full place to live. I first moved here in 1975. A lot has changed since then, and many things have been preserved. What the staff is suggesting could tonight could potentially change the face of Thousand Oaks as we know it. Please don't let that happen.
Chase Rashid, Yvonne Brockwell, and Anne Laffianza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Chase Rashid, City of Thousand Oaks. Now, the 5,400 number, I think it is really clear that that's not going to fit. You can walk around or drive around or go on Google Earth and look and see. There would not be enough room for that, just to build that. But what we do need is affordable housing. Whatever increase to the Measure E bank that is added, it should be a modest increase. It shouldn't be anything that takes us outside of what is the available vacant lots and density that we have. It shouldn't be any--but whatever is added, it needs to be stipulated. The units have to be, should be split on a 60-40 basis in favor of affordable housing. And 40% of that, that would be allocated for affordable housing, 40% of that should be allocated towards workforce housing. They did that in Santa Barbara. They incentivized people who don't own cars to be on the list, to be able to get an apartment. They incentivized people without cars. That would handle the traffic problem. That would also handle a lot of people who work, because a lot of people who work are right on that $55,000 a year mark that would qualify for workforce housing. The rest of it should go towards seniors, low-income, and veterans. They're doing veterans housing in Oxnard. We need to do that here. We definitely need to do senior housing. As already mentioned, a lot of seniors would like to move into something smaller. That would be a great opportunity for them to do that. I support the Boulevard plan, but I do feel like there has been that, you know, the lower income and the seniors and the workforce have not always been thought about with this plan, because one of the apartment complexes built off of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, $2,700 a month units. Who can afford that? I mean, nobody I know can afford that. And it's not like all the people I know are that, you know, or have jobs that are paying them that low. There are people that I know who have good-paying jobs who could not afford a $2,700 a month unit. So just keep in mind the affordable housing. If you allocate any more units to the bank--but again, I think it's clear that we aren't going to have 5,400 units added. That's just impossible. Thank you.
Yvonne Brockwell, followed by Anne Laffianza and Scott Harris.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Brockwell, and I live in the city of Thousand Oaks. And I had prepared something to say, but it's just super foggy in here. I don't know if anyone else is experiencing that. What I'm getting as a takeaway is our general plan is sick. It's riddled with specific plan disease, if you ask me. We have 13 specific plans in this city, and it sounds like the 13th might not have been your lucky number. It's very clear to me, you've spoken throughout the evening here in regards to never really having to count units, never really having to do an assessment, until now. And that's because of our Boulevard-specific plan. Now, yeah, it is a little confusing zoning and our general plan and everything, but some of us are studying and watching, and some of us are curious about your mathematical formula. Deeply appreciated. I'm not discrediting your work, but we would like to know more and more about your process. In addition to that, you know, the Boulevard-specific plan essentially has ripped apart the fabric of our community in so many ways at this point. And I would like to ask my question I asked before, and that is, where can the public view a summary of city expenditures related to the Boulevard-specific plan since its inception? Because to me, it's quite clear that we are paying in multiple ways for this plan, and that's beyond what's been, has even been built yet. In addition, I think it was about two years ago, you asked for 200 units that you allocated, that you moved, that were affordable housing units from Newbury Park to the Boulevard to create a bank so developers would have something to chew on, and that they could propose to build something wonderful, and we would all have an opportunity to see the benefit. We gave you that benefit and the benefit of the doubt. And where is that project now? The Lupe's project is stalled. There has not been a piece of heavy equipment on the property for months. And why is that? Because the infrastructure cannot support it. They're having problems right now because of the stormwater system and the sewage system that intersects the property, and that is the same all up and down Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Thousand Oaks Boulevard does not have the infrastructure to support this high-density residential development. So who's going to pay for that? Who's going to pay for the reengineering for that? That's what we want to know. We're not anti-development, but let's just open everything up and make it clear what's involved. Taxpayers, you not want to be paying for retrofits and reengineering after you've approved plans for developers. Let them pay for it. Thank you.
Anne Laffianza, followed by Scott Harris and Diane McKay.
Good evening. My name is Anne Laffianza, and I'm resident of Thousand Oaks. As we look at the question of density regarding our great city and the impact that too high and too low has on so many factors in our community, I'm reminded of one of my favorite phrases I actually hear quite often from council member Price: unintended consequences. I think this sentiment and approach is really valuable regarding issues of density, of which there are many, and it is truly very complicated. Whenever I'm thinking about such a complicated issue, my go-to are the Thousand Oaks Resident Attitude Surveys. This is the best place to start, because it is where the residents, your constituents, are letting you know what it is that they expect and need from their elected officials. As their elected officials, you are, I am sure, happy to note that when asked about the responsiveness of the city to residents and businesses, there was an increase in satisfaction from 52.9% in 2015 to 61.5% in 2017. When asked about city engagement with residents, there was also an increase in satisfaction. That's great news right now, as we tackle this issue of density, which deserves such engagement and responsiveness. The responsiveness of the residents has been clear with regard to one of the main issues that an increase in density will impact: the issue of traffic. According to the resident survey, the response to the question regarding the importance of services managing traffic in the city has increased from 68.3% in 2009 to 88.4% in 2017, with an overwhelming 88.4% rating it as extremely or very important. Comparing the current survey with 2015, there were statistically significant decreases in satisfaction with eight of the services tested, most notably managing traffic congestion in the city. In 2017, when residents were asked the question if the city government could change one thing, just one, to make Thousand Oaks a better place to live now and in the future, what change would you like to see? Reduced traffic congestion was the highest priority. There are, of course, other issues related to creating a high-density city, including impacts to other city infrastructure. There are unintended consequences, some that are foreseen and some not. However, it is clear that creating a higher-density city, especially on the Boulevard, is going to create more traffic congestion, which is exactly what the residents of the city are telling you that they don't want, and which, in fact, will negatively impact our economy and our small-business climate. As traffic congestion doesn't encourage residents to go out and shop, but to stay home and shop online. So I encourage you to do all you can to mitigate the issue of traffic congestion as you consider increasing density. And I would also like you, encourage you to allow the residents their right to vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Scott Harris, followed by Diane McKay and Michael Nye.
Thank you very much for the work you guys are doing tonight. I'd like to cede my minutes to Diane, if I may, and go ahead and let her have six minutes. She has plenty to say.
Yeah, we don't give time to others, so it's going to be three minutes each.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, then, there we go. So these would be unprepared remarks. I do want to thank you for the work you guys are doing. I think this is a challenge. There's a lot of people in the community that are very sensitive about any type of growth and don't want to acknowledge that we have had a vote, and that we do have a system in place, and that we are dealing with that on a level that is very professional and is spectacular in the way that we're going to be able to grow the city. We do need to be able to grow the city. I mean, we can talk all night about where our kids are going to live, and a lot of us that are here speaking have people in their mid-20s through their 30s, and it's a challenge for them to stay in the community. We have a school district that's struggling. We've got to bring more students to the school district. And in order to do that, we're going to have to add a few residential spots. Not 30,000. We're not going up to 81,000, and not even 5,400. But we're going to have to come to some sort of agreement and come to a rational number that we can all accept and we can all move forward, so that we can have some growth, we can have some excitement, we can have some economic growth, which would be fantastic for the community. And that's what you guys are challenged to do, is to find that number that's going to work. From the vision, Andy, that you had 20-some-odd years ago when you wrote this, to where we are today, to the fact that we can't move forward without growing as a community, the challenge is simply to determine where we're going to grow and how much we're going to grow. And that is what you guys are challenged to do, from Drew to the council, to the gentleman and the staff. And I have every confidence you guys are going to do a spectacular job. I love that we're having these debates and discussions, but in the end, it's going to come down to the decisions that you guys need to make. And you know where you're going to wind up. You're pretty close already. Claudia, you did some research and came up with a number, I think you said 701, or whatever the number you threw out. There is a number that's going to work. So the battle that you have, the discussion, and the debate, and the arguments that we need to have are what number are we going to wind up with? What is a rational number that we can use to move forward as a community with a reasonable amount of growth and a chance to keep our community, our school districts, our jobs, and our young people in the community, all those things moving forward? So that's what I challenge you to do. Come to that number quickly, but not without a rational approach, which I think has already happened from staff. Then let's identify what that number is, the very best projects that we can come up with to keep this community great and move forward from there. And with that, I hold on to my three minutes. Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you.
I didn't need them anyway. I really wasn't going to speak that long. My name is Diane McKay. I've lived here for a really long time, since 1972. I did have the pleasure of growing up here and riding my horses and live in that idyllic land that we all see in Ed Lawrence pictures and hopefully will see at the Library Foundation. But I'm also elected to look at the community colleges and education as a whole. And we've watched with somewhat alarm as the declining enrollment marched its way up to the community college level. And we are there for everybody to, not just for students coming out of high school. We're there to educate people for new jobs and those kind of things. And in the East Valley, we don't even have a lot of economic development going on with our community colleges, because the call for it isn't enough. There are not new businesses moving here, because there's not places for their staffs to live, where they could afford to live. I've had two small businesses here in Thousand Oaks, and most of the young staff, they drive here. They drive here from Ventura and other places because they can't afford to live here. I, myself, have four children. I have a 29- and a 31-year-old that wish they could live nearby. My 29-year-old daughter wants to have children soon. She'd love to live here. And it's just not in the cards right now, and it would be terrific if there were places that they could go. My mother was lucky enough to find a small condominium that she lives in, but not everyone is so lucky with their parents and as they downsize. So I really hope that you thoughtfully look at these numbers. We can't really afford to stay the same. It's not the same as it was in 1972 when I moved here. I think Measure E did what it was supposed to do. I think to assume what people's intent was when they voted for Measure E is a really dangerous game. But I think that most people wanted to slow growth. And to assume anything more than that and what their intent was, I think, is a mistake. But it did work. I mean, if you look at the numbers presented here tonight, it absolutely worked, and it did slow down the growth. And so now, we need to look at what do we do with what's left? And I hope that what we do with what's left is provide some reasonable housing, something that is different, something that, you know, we do need to change a little bit. We can't stay the same, or we're just stagnant. So something where our children can afford to live when they're adults, someplace they can move back to, and someplace where our parents or where even, you know, my four children left me. I don't actually need a gigantic house for them anymore. I want to fill it with grandchildren. But, you know, I can go live--if they live here, I can go visit them, and they don't have to come to my house. So I really, I feel like the process was done. The hard work is yours now, and the planning commission, and the people who want to develop these places that they'll live, to come up with some things that are different, something that will-- that will attract the people back here, bring the jobs back, and bring our children back. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Nye, followed by Janie Schmidt and Joan Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council staff. My name is Michael Nye. I'm the Executive Director of the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura, which is the housing authority for the City of Thousand Oaks. I will just say that I came here with a whole different speech for you tonight. However, after listening to staff's presentation and Councilman Fox, the history and the explanation of Measure E, I wrote down a few different things. So if you would just bear with me for a second. First of all, thank you, staff, for the thorough analysis. I very much appreciated tonight's presentation. As an affordable housing advocate, but also as a life, not a lifelong, but a resident of Ventura County, I really appreciate this analysis. I think, in order to echo a few of the comments earlier, we talk about commuting. I found a statistic from 2013, and I doubt whether it's changed very much since only 5,000 units have been built in the last 21 years. But 42,800 workers commute from other localities to Thousand Oaks for employment. That was shocking. The average monthly multifamily rent, I'm talking market rate at this point, has increased 25% from 2012 to 2016. In Ventura County, the average three-bedroom rent is 2,500, if you can find such a thing. The household income would have to be in excess of $100,000 in order to afford that rent. That's 40, over $48 an hour. That's significant. And in Ventura County, a two-wage earning household with two kids making $80,000 a year is considered low income. So after hearing tonight's presentation, I think for those of us who paid attention and were listening, I think the lesson is, the City of Thousand Oaks and the residents, you don't need to be afraid of affordable housing, workforce housing, taking over your community. It's an housing option that will benefit your community, not only now, but for years to come. And I think the important thing that I have heard is that the city, along with the county, needs housing options. The housing lifecycle follows the life lifecycle. And finally, again, as an affordable housing advocate, I look at the 5,400 as a tool to possibly change density within a community, to put high-density housing where it makes sense today, whereas maybe it didn't make sense in 1996. As your housing authority, please let us know how we can assist in any way, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Janie Schmidt, followed by Joan Edwards and Lyman Hayes.
Hello, my name is Janie Schmidt. I've been a longtime resident of Newberry Park. I came out to California from Wisconsin in 1959 to go to UCLA. I've lived in all sorts of different areas and watched communities change. And, you know, we're talking about what cities were like when I first came out here, and it was beautiful. And I've seen Westwood change into a metropolis, and I've seen what's happened in the Valley and Warner Center. They used to be full of horses and part of the Warner Ranch. And now you go into Woodland Hills and you see nothing but buses and congestions, and it's just really heartbreaking to see what's happened to our beautiful California. So here we have Thousand Oaks. We're talking about, can't afford to live here. I'll tell you, it's hard to live in California. It's expensive, no matter where you go. That's why people come here. They want to live in a beautiful area. But if you go back to Wisconsin, Oklahoma, or Georgia, you could get a mansion for what you pay for here. Now, I'm looking at this paper in Acorn, "142-Unit Four-Story Development Clears the First City Hurdle." Something like that is really disgusting to me. Do you see that picture of what this looks like? Do you have any idea how beautiful Thousand Oaks is? I'm an avid sports enthusiast, and I like camping and hiking and seeing our beautiful area. And now we're talking about high rises, four stories. What's next? Five stories. You're not going to be able to see our beautiful mountains anymore. All you're going to see is what's available in Newberry, I mean, Woodland Hills. I can't afford to live in Beverly Hills. You know, I had to come all the way out here to buy something I could afford. And I'm a single person with two sons that I raised by myself. And I've lived in apartments, and I've had hard times. But when we come to this beautiful area, we have to realize, we get something like this on our Boulevard, we're not going to see our beautiful stars at night. We're not going to see our hills at night, and how beautiful they are. You're going to have construction all over the hills. This place is unique, and we need to keep it this way. And I find something like this terribly disgusting. I can see if it's two stories, but we don't need something like that. Even this building here is like a monument. You look at it, it's all cement, and it's ugly. We see our beautiful oak trees going down. We have a tariot that was built here. And what do you see there? Palm trees. This is not Thousand Palm Trees. It's Thousand Oaks. And all I hear from the council is, we're going to take all these trees, and that tree, and that tree. This isn't, you know, when I first came out here and was hiking in the hills in 1960?
Ms. Schmidt, your time is up.
I was told by an old man that once you could walk through Thousand Oaks, all through the Valcaneo Valley, under the shade of oak trees.
Ms. Schmidt, your time is up. Thank you.
This should not be allowed.
Joan Edwards, Lyman Hayes, Jackson Piper.
I second that, Jamie. I'm Joan Edwards. I live in the Thousand Oaks portion of Westlake Village. And I just, when I see all these numbers, 81,000, 5,000, I'm afraid any number more than like 1,000, people are going to expect a vote, because for years, we've been hearing that we're nearly at build-out. This is a built-out city. So there's not that many units left. So I'm going to hope for a vote for over 1,000 units if this is what the staff comes back with, 5,000. I think that's too many. Because I voted on November 5th, 1996, "Shall the ordinance be adopted requiring voter approval of any change of the city's land use element of the general plan, which changes the area's net allowable residential density or total commercial acreage in the general plan?" And if that happened, we would need a special or a general election. So that's what we need to start deciding on if you're going to go over, about more than 1,000 new units, I'd say, to start planning the election, the general or the specific, whichever you prefer. And I also want to remind you that the City of Thousand Oaks, on December 3rd, 1996, approved that same exact wording, word for word. And I expect that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyman Hayes, Jackson Piper, Mark Sellers.
Good evening. My name is Lyman Hayes. I'm a 37-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I haven't prepared any remarks, so I'm going, it's going to be interesting to see what I come up with. The way I look at it is rather simplistic. I see it as two parties. We have special interests on one side, and we basically have the voters of Thousand Oaks on the other side. One side wants financial gain, and I don't blame them at all. The other wants peace, tranquility, low traffic, high quality of life. So where do we go with this? We've done, we, staff has done a fine analysis based upon a series of assumptions and interpretations. You change any of those, the numbers we stop on the screen will change significantly. So I wouldn't put a lot of stock into them, but they are interesting. We came up with a number of 5,400 units, whatever. I look at this as being a contest between the special interests, primarily developers who have a lot to gain financially. Now, where's my time? Where's my time?
You have a minute forty-one.
Okay. So what I would propose is we stay with the existing citywide allocation of about 300 units, plus a few. We ignore the potential 5,400. When we run out of the 300 units, we put it to the vote. The intention of E was a compromise between slow growth and no growth. So let's put it back in the lap of the voters, and let them tell us what they want. Otherwise, this is going to become a political third rail, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackson Piper, Mark Sellers, Nick Kidway.
My name is Jackson Piper. I've been a resident of the Ventu Park area of unincorporated Ventura County, just outside of Thousand Oaks, for 26 years now. Full disclosure, I'm also an employee of the Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning. I've been doing zoning enforcement for them for the past two years. But I'm actually here just speaking as a resident who has an interest in urban planning. I was excited to find out that Thousand Oaks was much farther below the baseline, or below the limit, than I had expected for the Measure E totals, because, quite frankly, it's a scary prospect to think that there's only 300 units that can be allocated for development in the city. I think that I can appreciate sentiments that oppose growth in an unlimited fashion, that worry about growth disrupting the city or causing environmental damage. But at the same time, it's not really something that makes sense to me to freeze a city in, basically, the current condition, or to attempt to restrict it to a certain vision of it in 1996. The city will need to change and grow in order to continue to be a viable place to live. I would like to advocate that the council consider the 5,400 units part of Measure E to be a viable addition to the housing stock of Thousand Oaks. The way I see it, we have large tracts of commercial land, and as well as our existing residential land, that well-developed have not been developed to a maximum density, that basically could still provide an opportunity for the city to grow without really significantly changing. The Boulevard and the other commercial areas basically exist as commercial-only areas. If that were to be changed, and there were to be residential allowed along that area as well, my calculations from last night, admittedly rough, were about 24,000 units could be added in the combined commercial-residential and the high-density residential, if it was developed to allow 15 units per acre in addition to what we have. Obviously, I'm not proposing that we add 24,000 units, but I think compared to that, 5,000 units is really not a significant amount to add. I think it would benefit the community to really increase the housing that is available. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Sellers, Nick Kidway, Marilyn Carpenter.
Good evening. Mark Sellers, a 35-year resident of Thousand Oaks. And I came down here tonight as someone who is somewhat familiar with the drafting of Measure E. When we started to look at Measure E, it would have been real easy to draft a language that said, "Any change in the land use designations for residential have to go to the ballot." It was decided not to follow that approach. Why? Because the city council had no crystal ball on what might occur on the next 30 years. The decision was made that there should be this net concept to allow some flexibility for the city council to deal with something that came maybe 21 years later, such as mixed-use housing, at the time, nobody talked about. So I'm here basically to urge you to support your employment base. I see this as an opportunity for the city council, whether it's 5,000 units you're going to put in the bank, or 4,000, or whatever the number is, you will have a tremendous power. This, for me, I recall Measure A, and maybe Councilmember Fox is the only one, recalls those days when we had Measure A, where there was a competition by the developers to get the best possible project for this city. They would jump over each other, adding amenities and upgrading the quality of the projects, just to get those allotments. This is going to be the same situation. You are the gatekeepers of what units get out of the bank. And developers will have to come before you and convince you the merits of their project and why this project should get any units. So I think this adds a great advantage to the City of Thousand Oaks. I remember talking with people from other cities that always were amazed how we got projects during that period in Measure A that were better than were built anywhere else in this county. And I think you can still do that. And it doesn't mean you can't say, "Well, we want some affordable component of those projects," and require that. So again, I think this gives you a tremendous amount of power to get the best quality projects possible. Thank you.
Thank you. That was former city attorney, Mark Sellers. Nick Kidway, Marilyn Carpenter, and Kay Sekra.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. And here, before the Measure A was passed, and I'm one of those people that don't believe in measures, and I did not vote for it. And some people really think that it's stupid, or maybe I'm actually a developer's spawn or something like that. But I think I have been impressed, and I became a citizen because of the fundamentals of this great nation. And to screw with that will create problems. And I was very unhappy before this meeting came. What I wrote is in the green packet, kind of short, because the way the press said it was that, you know, there has never been any counting, thousands of units could be built. And I said, "I mean, what have I been coming here to, on Tuesdays, and what have we wrought?" And at the end of this meeting, especially after the staff report and all that, I'm very happy. I think the city has been built in the right way. We have the right mix of growth and not so much growth. And I'm kind of sick of people constantly crying about low-income people, or people unable to buy homes and stuff like that. If you look at the people from my country, Pakistan, or look at people from Kenya who are here, or even look at people from inner cities, so many people get out. Why don't we emulate those people? One of my sons graduated in 2000 from Newberry Park High School. He owns, his home is worth a million dollars now. And he didn't do it overnight, and it was not his first home. But you first buy, one of my sons has bought in Studio City, $300,000. And eventually, he can come back to Thousand Oaks, or he can be, the whole idea is for the family to be together. And it's good that the rest of the people want to chip in for people who are not doing well, but you should not force people to that. I also disagree that people think that, well, you cannot build 5,000 homes. All these mountains, I mean, just like Studio City or Beverly, you can build... All these mountains, I mean, just like Studio City or Beverly, you can build all, and maybe 100 years from now, they will build them, but right now, you cannot build them. Part of the issue is money. It costs a lot of money to build on that, but now the places are built higher, but this is not the highest place in California. I mean, there are people working at Google making $100,000 and sleeping in a motorhome. So we are not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Carpenter, Kay Sekra, and Suzanne Duckett.
Hello. I'm Marilyn Carpenter, longtime Thousand Oaks resident. Maybe I'm becoming the John Byer. I think I've been here a long time. I learned a lot tonight, and I want to thank the staff for explaining what, before I came, was almost unintelligible. Thank the council for the questions and the reminders, and the reminders about what Measure E is really all about. So I don't have any great words of wisdom. I have a few random thoughts that I want to share with you to remind you that there are things that are really, really important to the people of this community. We have fought decades to protect the quality of life here. We have fought decades to make sure that we didn't become the San Fernando Valley. And there are little communities in the San Fernando Valley. It's not one big conglomerate. It was once individual communities that have mushed together. So I've learned a lot, and I think it's important to just share a few things that I think will help you as you go forward and help the staff, I hope. First, the community's up in arms. If you haven't noticed, there are emails and postings that are flying back and forth that you can't imagine. So people are panicked that you're going to betray their faith in you by ignoring Measure E. So just be conscious that that's a community sentiment. There is one thing that I want to raise, and that's about the discussion about Caneo Oaks and being able to change the land use designation for Caneo Oaks, the zoning for Caneo Oaks. I want to ask the city attorney whether that's a taking, because actually, those of us who live there and have larger pieces of property, and we are now, I mean, currently the way it's zoned, we could add additional units to our property, and if you downzone us to a lower-density community, what happens to our ability to maximize our economic potential on our own lots? Not saying we want to do it, not saying we want to change the character of that wonderful neighborhood, but you rob us of that if you snake our units that, frankly, I didn't even know I had. I thought it was rural-exclusive, and here I am, much more higher-density property than I realized. So that's another word to the wise. I think a reminder, the residents of this community care deeply about congestion on the Boulevard. They don't want to see it, and I personally join with them. I want to see the hillsides. I spent months working on the freeway corridor design guidelines, and we identified vistas. And if we start blocking those views from the freeway, the state's doing that for us with those god-awful walls that we have to look at, but we're doing it to ourselves. If we start putting high-rise buildings close to the sidewalk, we can't see the hills beyond. So I caution you about allowing that kind of development to go forward. I came across, my niece actually, my great-niece sent something to me, and I said, "Pop, this is the most perfect timing." There is a new National Geographic presentation out that talks about the happiest cities in the country and what makes them the happiest cities, and it's fascinating. Lots of times, it's about density, and it's about congestion, and it's about open space, and it's about places to hike, places to ride bikes. These are communities that sound like what we've tried to create here.
Mrs. Carpenter.
So I encourage you to maybe take a look at it if you can. And last, final thought, from that report, enlightened leaders make conscious decisions to favor quality of life over economic development or political expediency. That was the byword, and I'll leave you with that. I hope you will be enlightened leaders. Thanks.
Thank you. Kay Sekra, Suzanne Duckett, Chuck Cohen.
Hi, I'm Kay Sekra. I think you guys remember me from a few years ago, and I have to admit, I have a few bad memories from those few years ago. When my husband and I moved here, I think 15 years ago, the house we bought was next to two pretty large lots. My husband called the city, well, I think he came here personally, and he asked what they were zoned and if they would ever be changed, and they said they were going to be houses. They would never be anything but houses. Well then, four years ago, there were some very, a crowd of very eager people in our yard wanting our signature on a piece of paper that said they were going to turn it into a Section 8 housing for seniors, and they were pretty pushy and eager and happy. My neighbor had died, and they finally had their hands on that property, and they wanted the zone changed. And then not long after that, the other lot that was going to be houses, and Mohamed Asa was the developer, he had plans, he decided to change that lot to high-density and build an assisted-living facility. And if those projects had have succeeded, we would have been ruined. Nobody would have wanted to buy our house. So we fought it, and it wasn't long that we discovered that the city had already given Mini Mansions a loan of $500,000 so they could begin construction on that project before we had a chance to present our case here, before the hearing. You had already given them money. I felt betrayed by that, and I smell a rat right now. I don't trust this city. When you say that there's only a few acres that can be built on, and you won't use those 5,200 or however many additional units that you want to put in, I know you're going to tear down houses, and you're going to go higher and higher. Look at Los Feliz. There are single-family homes squished in between these huge apartment buildings that you've shoved in there. That used to be all single housing, zoned for single houses. Another thought that I had is our water bill. We're constantly being told there's a crisis, and it's only going to get worse, but you keep building and building and building, and it's getting higher and higher. You're shoving in units, you're not going to stop at 5,200. It's going to keep going. I've watched in these last few years how you've wanted to go around Measure E, there were the assisted-living and the Section 8 housing where allowed you to go behind Measure E and get additional units, and I just don't trust you, and I don't think anybody else should either.
Thank you. Suzanne Duckett, Chuck Cohen, and Christine Kano.
Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. If you want to provide affordable housing for people, insist that the apartment owners decrease their rents by one-half or two-thirds. If you're a homeowner out there and you believe in affordable housing, decrease your house value by a half or two-thirds when the appraiser comes, and sell it for that, or sell it to your children for an affordable price to them. That's how you bring affordable housing here, to this city. Now, the school system, if they want to bring back students to the school district, they need to get good projects in, good programs that bring all of this homeschool kids back to the campus. It's ridiculous how many homeschool kids are out there. So that's a school board problem. The next item, Claudia, it's not hard to understand this. A couple of people out here have understood it. They're setting up a new bank account. They're going to take, they're going to go through and find out what was underdeveloped or not developed, and they're going to put it in a new bank account, which is where all this development's going to come from. Okay? It's not hard. People who have not used their land out to the max are going to be in trouble. This is not fair. It's not acceptable, and that's what's going on here. And I seem to recall, you know, I'm a professional, and I'm sorry that two are left. We're professional signature gatherers for recall. Professional, and I'm proud of it. Right, Mr. Fox? Yeah, recall. At least four recall. Four of you can be recalled, and one can be relocated somewhere else. So I want to thank you for your time tonight, and my time is up, but I want to give you that message. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Cohen, followed by Christine Kano and Daniel Chavez.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm Chuck Cohen, Thousand Oaks. First, let me say that the staff report and the work behind it, and the selfless effort of your ad hoc committee are both intelligible and intellectually balanced. The work product was managed, has managed to avoid leaks, delays, and outside influence. I received my copy just last Friday, appropriately after distribution to the full council. What I'd like to relate to you is a couple of things having to do with my view of the community. What we've accomplished here in the last 50 years, actually 46 years since the general plan was adopted in 1971. Ridge lines and hillsides are no longer buildable. City built to its boundaries and sprawl is not possible. Building heights are limited to maintain public views and avoid tunnel effects. Privacy and openness between buildings is protected by setbacks. Streets were sized and most privately built for a population of 180,000 people. Similarly sized and most privately built is the public water and sewer system. Early days of street flooding in downtown Thousand Oaks were ended by the installation of stormwater facilities. Private citizens before incorporation, with the assistance of the Janes Corporation and Ed Janes, passed a ballot measure to bring water to the city of Thousand Oaks, which is at that time only on well water, and I served on that committee. Acclaimed planning firm Leo Daley of San Francisco managed the general plan. The initial land planning for this community in the West End was done by the Janes Corporation and Daniel Mann, Menon Hall &amp; Johnson, nationwide acclaimed engineers. For the East Side, it was done by American Hawaiian Steamship Company and the Bechtel Corporation, again, worldwide engineers. Most of the 16,000 acres of public open space was donated. It is efficiently managed by a joint powers authority, the Caneo Open Space Agency. Our Cavalier and Sheer Theaters and City Hall are municipal miracles for a city of our size. An outstanding public school system, including neighboring Moore Park Community College, educates our children and is bolstered by outstanding parochial schools. California Lutheran University is a recognized beacon of higher education and is part of our community. The Caneo Recreation and Park District preceded incorporation and continues to be the premier public park system in our region. These are all things that have been accomplished here and that people who have myopic views of what goes on here may not be fully aware, so I'm bringing it to their attention. As a non-property tax city, Thousand Oaks, along with Camarillo and Simi Valley, and Moore Park for that matter, we rely on sales tax substantially provided by an auto mall, the regional Oaks Shopping Center, and Thousand Oaks Boulevard merchants. Those things have to be kept into consideration. All those things are factual. This has been a well-managed and balanced city for over 50 years despite complaints and criticisms.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Christine Kano, Daniel Chavez.
Thank you for your work. My name is Christine Kano. I've lived in Thousand Oaks for 15 years now. I've been blessed to live in the Shadow Oaks community, which is wonderful. I have been a part of the community and involved, and one thing I have to say, it is harder to get volunteers nowadays to be involved in different community organizations because people are just stretched to thing. I think the people mentioned commuting and having to go outside the community and to live here, I think that's part of it. I was moved to come here because I personally know families that can't afford to live here. I personally have been looking for, my husband and I have been looking for a house for my in-laws to move here as they get older so we can help with them. For the last 18 months, and there's nothing here that they can afford to live in, even if we could afford to buy the house. We have friends at work that commute in from out of town. We have friends who have young adults that are, have graduated, they have careers, they can't afford to live here, and young families can't afford to live here. So, you know, as they mentioned, the schools are decreasing in enrollment. But one reason I was impelled to come here is I'm in a class for housing policy at the MPPA program at Cal Lutheran, and I've been made aware of the crisis in housing shortage in California and in the nation. And I know in California, we were projected that we needed 180,000 units in the state to be built every year, and the state has been building 80,000. So it's 100,000 units deficit every year, and so that's causing a severe housing shortage. People are not able to, it's creating concentration poverty areas. In my opinion, the city of Thousand Oaks is beautiful. I think that the city will never look like the valley, and I know the signage ordinances that we have here in town, it would never look like the valley. like the valley. I think you've done a great job, and I trust that the planning commission and the council would be responsible and would be approving things that add richness to our architecture or fabric in the city. But I would advocate that on the parcels that are developed or redeveloped as we move forward, that we maximize, that we build it to the maximum density that it is zoned for, instead of allowing for it to be underdeveloped. And then, if possible, consider moving the zoning of lower-density areas into a higher, the next higher range, if they're vacant lots.
And your time is up.
Perfect.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Daniel Chavez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, not Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, not, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, residents, and staff. My name is Daniel Chavez Jr. I am a resident, born and raised in the city of Oxnard, as well as a candidate for the California State Assembly, District 44. My intentions today was just to come, listen, and see what the challenges that the city of Thousand Oaks is facing. I can honestly tell you that it's completely night and day between the city of Thousand Oaks and the city of Oxnard. In the city of Oxnard, we have seen so many times overdevelopment when it comes to housing. Currently, right now, in the city of Oxnard, we have five housing developments, but yet our council still continues to say that we have a housing issue. I believe that there is a balance that needs to be put forward. It's between housing, business, and education. In the city of Oxnard, we have failed to include our businesses because over the years we have created this negative image to businesses. Education, while we keep overpopulating the area, which means now our schools don't have the capacity, which means now teachers are doing 35 or even 40 students to a teacher. The Oxnard School District just purchased land and a farmland that they are going to be building an elementary and a junior high, and I guarantee you in two years, it will be irrelevant at that point. I say that it's night and day between the two because we see, Thousand Oaks, that for a one-bedroom apartment versus the city of Oxnard, rent here in Thousand Oaks is at least 200 to 300 more, if not more than 300, than it is in the city of Oxnard. We have a population of over 207,000, where you guys are about 130,000 residents. I understand what many of the speakers said today about the importance of the quality of life, but at the same time, what type of quality of life is there if there's not housing available, if there's not businesses available? One of the speakers brought up the San Fernando Valley, Woodland Hills, Warner Center. I, for work, work for LA Metro, which is part of the top three largest transit agencies in our nation. I work out of the San Fernando Valley in Chatsworth, so she probably was talking about the bus that I drive through Woodland Hills. We all seen through Thousand Oaks Boulevard, a metro bus that travels along that road. And it's funny because I just did that route just the other day. Coming up Westlake Boulevard to Thousand Oaks Boulevard is outrageous with the amount of traffic that you have. I would recommend, as, not as a resident, but as a person that has seen the effects of what happens when you overdevelop in an area, choose a different location. That area is not ideal for more development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Mr. Chavez was our last speaker, and I will now turn it over to staff to answer any of the questions and concerns raised by our 24 speakers this evening.
Just a few comments and response to various speakers. Would like to emphasize that staff's analysis is not working around Measure E, that the analysis that we conducted was consistent with the letter of Measure E and how it has been implemented over the past 21 years. There was also a concern expressed by a speaker about traffic, and I would just like to reiterate that any project in Thousand Oaks is entirely subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, which requires in part analysis of traffic. So any projects that are proposed anywhere in the city must go through a sequoian analysis, including traffic. There were also a couple of comments that spoke a bit to zoning. And I don't want to get into the weeds too far here, but what we've been talking about tonight is the general plan. And the general plan is the highest level of land use control in the city. It operates at a general level. It defines density, as we've been talking about, for residential uses. Zoning controls the number of structures that can be built on a particular lot. It controls other factors, setbacks, and heights and all that. So we are talking about the overarching densities for certain areas, but as we mentioned earlier, developers often opt to develop at a lower density. Those projects that we see throughout the city today have specific zoning categories assigned to them. They were built according to those zoning categories. They just happen to be perhaps built at a lower density than the maximum. But there's a distinct difference between the general plan, land use controls, and zoning. General plan controls the density, zoning controls the number of structures on a lot. We are not talking about changing zoning. We are talking about the general plan. And I think I will actually leave it at that. Thank you.
We have the city attorney wanting to make comments on this, Mr. Gilli. Do you have anything? No? Okay, then Ms. Noonan.
Thank you. Just a couple of additional comments based on notes, and hopefully I got all of the notes correct. One of the speakers indicated that it appears that the city is taking units from specific properties tonight. That's not what is occurring tonight. Again, this is an informational presentation by staff who has evaluated and reviewed Measure E to calculate the baseline to ensure that we comply with Measure E. Another speaker indicated or stated that the staff analysis is based on new assumptions and interpretations, but that's not the case. There are no new assumptions, there are no new interpretations, because staff is not policymakers. In order to interpret Measure E in any different way, it would require a policymaker, i.e. a city council member, to make that decision, and staff doesn't have the authority to do that. So the calculations that were conducted by staff tonight are based on the same assumptions and interpretations that have been in existence since Measure E was adopted. A question was asked on whether or not downzoning property constitutes a taking, and actually it does not. The U.S. Supreme Court has advised and ruled on a number of occasions that property owners do not have a right to future development or future potential use of their property, and that downzoning of property does not constitute a taking of property. The U.S. Supreme Court and even our California Supreme Court has also found that cities have the police powers, and that's kind of elementary or probably one of the biggest powers or tools that city councils have, and that's their land use control. Cities, city councils, cities have the right to manage its land uses in the city, which includes the ability to designate land uses in a different manner, such as from commercial to residential or commercial to industrial, and it also includes the ability to downzone property and upzone property. The only limitation on that is when the voters adopt something such as a restriction on what city council to do, and that is what Measure E says. So while city council has the right to downzone property, that doesn't violate Measure E, city council can increase density, and so long as it doesn't exceed the density baseline set forth in Measure E, it doesn't require a vote of the people. If the city council did want to increase density on land that exceeded the baseline in 1996, it would require a vote of the people. Another, a few speakers actually have requested that the 5,400 units be voted on by the public and that they should be put on the ballot. And Mayor Pro Tem Fox asked me to address that, and I just wanted to clarify again that what the voters voted on in 1996 is exactly what staff has articulated tonight. Those 5,400 units are not being added to the general plan. They exist in the general plan right now. They existed in the general plan in 1996. So there's no requirement to have a vote on those 5,400 units. Those are the units that the voters voted on in 1996. One of the other comments that were made was with respect to the population projection. And just to like to clarify, I think staff said this during the presentation, but when you're looking at population projections, you're only looking at the city incorporated limits. Our general plan, however, goes beyond those boundaries. The general plan includes our entire planning area and also includes unincorporated areas. So if you're looking at, if you're trying to compare population projections based on census data or state of finance, the Finance Department of the state data, that's going to be inconsistent with what the general plan says because the general plan is wider and broader than what a city is. I think that that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. I will open it up now for a council discussion with the idea in mind that we will frame, that we will frame certain directions and guidance to city staff that will be realistic, much more realistic than an 81,000-unit baseline. Seriously, that has to be looked at very, very closely. So the first one who would like to weigh in on this is Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to break this up into pieces and handle the first item, which is just to simply receive the report, and then, as you point out, there probably is going to be some discussion on item two. So I'm going to move that council receive and file the Measure E residential baseline analysis report.
Are there any comments or questions regarding this? None? Okay, then I will call for a vote on that one particular item. And there are no strings attached to approving that we have received the report.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
And secondly, and I think this goes to the crux of moving forward, first, I want to thank the comments from the community tonight. Should be no surprise, there's folks on various sides of this issue, so to speak, and I think council tonight just needs to give staff some general direction on where do we go forward with respect to the 5,400 units. And as I listened to the comments tonight, I was also, kind of took note of what the mayor commented earlier. The number 5,400, while is a, it's a mathematical calculation, as outlined in the staff report, they say it's improbable. You can use other terms, infeasible, impossible, for a whole variety of reasons. Staff, and I think the council realizes that 5,400 is a number that is simply a number. It is absolutely infeasible that even if we wanted to, we could fit those units, or they would be part of our housing stock. The mayor brought up a number that I think isn't just chosen out of the air, and that's relative to the housing element. And then Mrs. Edwards actually brought up a number of about 1,000. She was referencing a vote. But I think council could give staff some direction, and I'm careful here not to be specific with, you know, a number here, but out of the 5,400, if we were to take 80% of that and simply not touch it, just leave it for whatever use or no use at all, and looked at maybe 20%, which I think is a very conservative number. It is, if you look at the charts, based on past growth, that would provide for enough units for the next four to five years at the same growth rate. So the council would not be coming back, you know, every year or every month on that, and at least as a starting point to have staff bring back a report. We can talk about affordable housing, we talk about workforce housing, we can talk about entry-level housing, but I think staff needs some direction on what they do with those 5,400. And I think if we start small, 20%, it's measured, it's certainly conservative, and now finally, it's, you know, I think it's a fair assessment. It is transparent. It is a number that we can look at and then, moving forward, start doing the math from. You know, it can be a fair criticism for some that we never came up with a number. But as I mentioned before, it's easy to look back 21 years and said we should have had the number to begin with. We didn't, but we have now. And I think the city attorney and the city staff have outlined, sooner or later, the city would have done this analysis, either because the state mandated us to, or we told a developer somewhere down the road, you have to have a vote of the people. So sooner or later, this analysis is going to be done. And I will say this, it has nothing to do with Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We have units that are already quote in the bank for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This analysis would have been done regardless of what is happening on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We have growth control in the city and in the state of California. That's not a good thing. And sooner or later, the city was going to be tasked or challenged on that. So I would move, we go slow on this, we take this incrementally, measured approach, and starting out with 20%, brought back to the council with some suggestions, some guidelines. You know, I certainly would want to hear from my other colleagues, but I just want to get the ball rolling that, you know, we start this incrementally, and I think that does a couple of things. One, all of us are concerned about quality of life, and I think any reasonable person could look at that and say, well, council could take the whole 5,400, we're not, we're taking a very small incremental approach. Secondly, for those that are interested in housing, and certainly we have major stakeholders, CLU, the hospital, our school district, major employers in town, there is a real need for housing in this town. So suggest that we're not going to build any more homes, that's not realistic either. So I think this number, at least for the foreseeable future based on past growth, can give us some blueprint for where we go from here. So I'm going to move for 20% direction to staff to bring back how we would then allocate that. And then finally, I would say, we already have, already in place, the pre-screening process, and that's an important component. Mr. Sellers alluded to Measure A. I was around for Measure A. It worked very, very well. We have essentially the same thing now with our pre-screening process. You can't get a single unit without coming to the council first with your renderings and all those things for the public to see and the council to see, if we even want to give you a provisional opportunity to then go and have a full development proposal brought back to the planning commission and ultimately the city council. So we have many mechanisms in place to make sure that the city, residents, council, has total control of all the existing units. And as has been pointed out, none of those units can be touched without an amendment to the general plan for lower density. So I think there's many, many tools here that are available for us to make sure that we approach this through a very measured, a metered approach, and one that can provide some comfort and some confidence on the part of folks that the quality of life in Thousand Oaks as we know it is simply not going to change. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. We do have Mr. Price and then Mr. Adam, who would like to weigh in on this discussion.
Yes, thank you. Couple of comments. I just want to start by thanking all the speakers who came out tonight, and I do want to thank the staff for what I think was, what I know, was not just a well-reasoned, well-thought-out, but a, probably an excruciatingly painful process to go through. So I thank you for that. And I know that going back in history and trying to recreate that sort of data, you know, was a Herculean task, and you guys were up to it, and I thank you for that. I'd also like to thank the speaker, Ms. Kano, who brought up the state's housing crisis, and it is something that simply cannot be ignored. In the past year, this past legislative session, there were over 100 housing bills that were proposed. 18 of those made it to the governor's desk and were signed into law. Some of those took away cities' rights to oversee permitting for houses, for residences. There are other mandates that are coming down from the state that will impose fines on cities. Not growing is... Not growing is not an option. The state of California has taken that away from us. We are charged every eight years, I believe it is, with an allocation of arena numbers, and we have to have the capacity to build that housing. And I would offer to you that we are doing that in Thousand Oaks at this time. The projects that we've seen thus far on the Boulevard, although this is not a discussion about the Boulevard, but I'll point to those, those projects include low-income housing. And the developers know that they need to include low-income housing now in order to get those projects, to get a shot at it. As Mr. Fox said, we are approving projects in much the same fashion that Measure A would have allowed for, and we're getting, we're making ground in not just affordable projects, low-income housing, but senior affordable housing as well. So, you know, it'd be nice, and I understand the desire, is to just freeze time and stay exactly how we are, but that is not reality. And that would be an easy decision for us to make up here, but it would be the wrong decision because we would be subjecting the voters, the residents of our city, to substantial fines for not complying with state law. So I am certainly not of the belief that 5,400 units would ever fit anywhere in the city. They won't. We're not going to try and cram them in there. But I do know that there's a certain number that will, and a certain number that has to. So I am in favor of chipping away slowly, incrementally, with a well-reasoned plan for adding some units to the bank that, over the course of the next however many years, and I'll leave that to my colleague down there who said it much better than I, that we can, we can use to grow from. We can expand the Boulevard. Here's another thing. You know, I think, again, it was Mr. Fox down there the other day, or a couple of weeks ago, who mentioned that, I know that there's a fear that this density is going to invade our neighborhoods. Well, I would argue that it already is. The state has instituted laws that require we allow ADUs to be built, accessory dwelling units. And there are families who are now moving their kids into those ADUs, or kids who are moving their parents into those ADUs. We have families who are doubling up in homes and living in garages now because we don't have the housing stock that we need. So we're going to solve the problem that you, one of the problems that you fear, quite by accident, but by creating additional housing units in areas of the city that can handle them. And with that, I'll turn the mic over to somebody else.
That would be Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was grateful for Dr. Connolly and School Board member Phelps's insights that the schools are declining in enrollment, and we have to make use of really what the people voted for and to use it wisely. And I thought the input from the community was great, and there's lots of work to be done. And I think we can move forward from here. The number's the number. The work's been done. And now we have to see how we're going to respond to that. So, thank you.
I would like to weigh in as well. I was not ready to approve, and I'm not ready to, well, I think you took your name off the list, that's why I... Oh, okay. Well, then, go ahead.
Anyway, thank you. Sorry, Mayor. It's not your fault. Anyway, yeah, I think 20% is a reasonable number. It's a conservative start. Makes sense to me. I would like staff to get back to us about how that might pertain to different types of housing, affordable housing, entry-level housing, senior housing, arena numbers, regional housing, need assessment numbers that the state wants us to build. I think that could be, and workforce housing, I think that could be a big, big part of what we're looking here. And I will just say, the idea of building no housing in Thousand Oaks is completely unrealistic. The facts are clear, to me at least, from some of the thoughtful presentations we've had here this evening. And by the way, I think the presentations here were great, from everybody. I've been here for, I think, five years now. Some of the best comments I heard, I heard tonight, really thoughtful presentations. But, you know, you look at some of the stuff we heard, I mean, Thousand Oaks, the oldest community in the county, we have a millennial outmigration, we're losing jobs, we're losing customers, so to speak. Perfect example, that Amgen just moved 500 employees to Tampa because this community is not affordable for these people. That's our biggest employer, not just in the city of Thousand Oaks, but in all of Ventura County. They employ 5,000 people. We have to step up to that reality and react to it. And, you know, and of course, Matthew Fina mentioned our GDP's dropping by 2% too, so the economy's starting to slow down, and I think a lot of it has to do with housing. And yeah, I'll just say this from a personal note, I don't know if I should go here or not, but I'm going to anyway. I live in South Shore Hills. I moved in there in the early 90s. In fact, some of my neighbors are here. Joan lives in South Shore Hills. Yvonne lives in South Shore Hills. And we, I think we've all lived there for quite, quite a few years. And I remember when I bought in, I think the house was like 300, 400 grand, something like that. These houses we're sitting in now are a million or more, which I guess that's great for us, you know? But it's because of such a huge demand and such a low supply of housing in Thousand Oaks has pushed these housing prices up, but it's not sustainable, I don't think. It's not sustainable. And it's not fair to the people that are trying to get a foothold here in Thousand Oaks, you know? We got ours, and nobody else is going to have a chance to get theirs? No, that's not right. That's not right. And I want to see that cycle reversed. And I think that, you know, these units, however we decide to roll them out, could give us a real opportunity to offer, offer some opportunity to some of the younger people that want to get established here in Thousand Oaks. With that, 20% sounds good?
Thank you.
I think it's a reasonable number.
Thank you. I would like to weigh in. In order to receive 1,080 units from the 5,400 that have been mentioned tonight, certain properties will have to be rezoned in the general plan in order to free up those units. And I was, I said at the beginning of the meeting, I'm not ready to come up with a number, and I'm not. I would like to see more research on this. I would like to see what a comprehensive analysis of our general plan shows, whether and how we reduce the baseline to a realistic number, because we know that 81,000 is completely unrealistic because our infrastructure cannot support it. And we also, I also would like to see if we can change certain density ranges that are more realistic, rather than having a density range, a residential one, from 15 to 30 units. Does it make sense to reduce that from 15 to 20 units, 15 to 25 units, for example? Before I move to add any more units to a pool, if I don't know where they would be built, how they would be built, I'm not ready to actually vote on a number tonight. I would like, I don't think we are in a hurry because we have several hundred units in the Measure E bank, and I'm not sure how many developers will come before us in the next year or so to request more than 300 or 400 units. So I think that we actually do have the time to get an analysis, figure out where these parcels are in our city where we could actually use those 1,080 units. I'm not saying that 20% is wrong. 20% may be a very good number, but I'm not ready to approve that tonight, not knowing where we would want to build and how. I think it would actually be very beneficial to give staff the time to come back with information so we can figure out where those units would go.
Yeah, Mr. Adam.
To do my verbal request to speak, anyway.
You have power now because your name is on there.
Well, correct me if, I'm not trying to put words in Mr. Fox's mouth, but correct me if I'm wrong. You're not suggesting that we add 1,080 units to a pool this evening? By no means at all. I mean, that would take a general plan amendment to do that, and then they'd have to be, you know, ultimately put in the pool and used for reallocation. You're suggesting staff get back to us with the feasibility for that and what it would take to do that, and does it make any sense? Am I correct?
Yeah, I think, let me, many of the mayor's comments were actually my line of thinking, but I, I'd want to give staff, you know, there's 5,400 units floating out there. I don't, I'm not interested in giving them all 5,400 to analyze. And in view of the public comments tonight, I think the public's looking for some reassurance from the council that we're going to stay on course for a slow-growth, measured use of the remaining measure units. And so just Claudia brought up the housing element, and we heard some other comments. I just thought 20%. And then I looked at the growth rate from the past, that seemed like a conservative number, but something that would be enough that staff could actually analyze. I don't have any idea where they may go or any of those other things, but I just think we got to give staff something out of this so they can bring an analysis back. I think some of the points that Claudia made were good ones, but I think we have to start somewhere.
Of course, that...
I think Mr. Powers is chomping at the bit to...
That number could be, could change based on, if we're asking staff to come back to us, you know, in a context of, okay, affordable housing, and arena numbers, and senior housing, and workforce housing, that's got a lot to do with the number.
Yes. And I think 20% is a reasonable start. I'm not comfortable with anything higher than that.
They may come back and say, you don't need that much.
They could.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Price, then Mr. Powers, and then Ms. Noonan.
Thank you. Well, I'm in agreement with all that's being said at this point. What I do want to reiterate is that while we're not doing anything tonight, staff's going to come back, it'll be, I'm guessing after the first of the year before we hear anything. And at that point, regardless of the number that we put into the theoretical bank, council has complete control over everything that gets developed with the pre-screening process.
Well, not just the...
That is now, is there another process?
No, not just the pre-screening. It requires a general plan amendment.
Right. General plan amendment, then the pre-screening, then Planning Commission, then it's coming back to the council again. You know, we're in, we're in control.
I realize that, yes.
I think that's a good thing.
So, again, I think, I didn't articulate them like the mayor did, but many of the things that the mayor kind of listed off there, I would expect at some level to be part of the staff report that the staff brings back. Mr. Powers, is that, are we kind of in alignment on what you're looking for from the staff? I mean, you guys put in number two, I'm assuming this is what you're looking for.
Well, tonight, our primary objective was to seek guidance from the council, and that's certainly what this discussion is providing. I think, and I will, I will give some broader context, and then I'll ask Mark to sort of chime in because his department will be tasked with whatever they're coming back with. I think any, getting a sense of what the council's appetite, if there is an appetite for any number, gives staff an opportunity to provide context around that number in terms of potential locations. That's been one of the biggest concerns that have been discussed around this. And so I think it would be our intent, and Mark, you can correct me if you feel like I'm off-base here, that we would also provide that context in the same staff report, in terms of, you know, the types of areas, the types of land uses, as it relates to whatever the number that council would choose to act on. The second piece, and Mark can speak to this as well, we are entering the next regional housing needs assessment cycle. That starts in 2018. And that is the process in which all, the counties assign a number, and all the cities then have to sit at the table and go through a very complex exercise of determining how that number is divided up. Having clarity, if there is an appetite by the council to do that, will absolutely help in that process as we move forward.
Well, let me ask a question with your permission, Madam Mayor. I just picked a 20% based on other comments, if, with your permission. Mr. Towne, is the, is, of the 5,400, if the council takes a conservative, admittedly kind of first step at this with 20%, is that enough, too little, to meet some of the foreseeable needs that the city may have with respect to this issue?
I think that is a reasonable start. And I say that, having an understanding of development proposals that we're looking at, an understanding of vacant and underdeveloped land, it's a good place, I think, to start. As, as Mr. Powers just pointed out, we are about to enter the next RENA round, the regional housing needs assessment, where we will end up getting a number from the state. We will have to accommodate that number in terms of capacity for housing going forward in our next housing element update. So I think it's a reasonable place, reasonable place to start. And if I may follow up on, on Mr. Powers' comments, the direction that I'm hearing right now from council, I think, does give, give us enough to work with, the idea of looking at what 20% could do or couldn't do in terms of location, in terms of past development patterns. We can bring back to you context for the ideas that we just heard, workforce housing, you know, younger employment housing, affordable housing. We can provide context on RENA, the next housing element update, because this is all tied together. And I think that will help you to be able to make a more informed decision going forward. We can certainly bring that back to you.
Okay, so, but I also want to make sure, the mayor's comment, because I think this is important, where the city would identify the general plan amendment so we see exactly what we're, where we're balancing the measure requirements are in the city.
Absolutely. Now, we would, we would come back if we want to start, if you would like to start with a 20% number, we would identify where those general plan amendments would start to potentially move units into the measure pool, and we would identify tentatively for your review potential recipient areas.
So, again, I think, rather than just kind of punt the ball, I think we need to give the staff some guidelines, some narrowing of this. The other thing I would just offer to my colleagues is, I would foresee at some point in time, you know, it's just an estimate, that this, this step would, would provide for the city for the next three, four, five years. But I do believe at some point in time, there'll be a legitimate policy question on the council if they want to not do any more general plan amendments. Simply say, we're not interested in doing, we know these are there, but we, we're not interested in doing any more general plan amendments. So, you know, the 20% number, I think, is a number everybody can agree on that simply by using the, the housing requirements that we have, we'll probably reach that over the next 10 years. But beyond that, it may not be the case.
I think Mrs. Noonan wanted to weigh in as well.
I think it's clear now, but I just wanted to reiterate that tonight's, part two of tonight's discussion with the city council does not involve adding units to a bank. The only way that that occurs is by processing a general plan amendment. It's not on the agenda tonight. City council would have to initiate the general plan amendment. It would have to be evaluated by staff. We'd have to go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then come back to the city council.
Yes, thank you for the explanation or clarification. The other item that I mentioned is the baseline. We do know that we have an unrealistic or impractical baseline of 81,000, knowing that our infrastructure cannot support that. So how do we go about changing that baseline? And is that going through the comprehensive review of the general plan, or how is that done?
Well, the, the way to, to look at that, that delta, that difference is by looking at, at the general plan and land use categories. Those could theoretically be changed going forward through some kind of a general plan amendment, a land use amendment overall going forward. What we talked about tonight in part, as was mentioned earlier, is that we have some pretty broad ranges. And so what you end up with are a lot of projects that were built at very lower densities, but within those ranges. You know, we could look at that and...
The density ranges, yes.
The density ranges, bring some ideas back. So that's, that's part of, part of what we could do. Because there will always be a pretty large difference between, and this is not just Thousand Oaks. As was mentioned, most cities develop well below their maximum.
Yes, because, because the topography of Thousand Oaks doesn't lend itself to building all... all of these units. There are site constraints, and that is the reason why many of the properties were built at a lower density. So, in that sense, it's kind of artificial to, to add units to something that really could never be built. And that is what I'm trying to avoid with this next round or this next wave, is to bring down the baseline and get a realistic look or idea of the true numbers of units that can be built in the city of Thousand Oaks. And we know it's not 81,000. We know it's, it's not even, you know, 60,000 probably. Again, unless we go up. And we do have laws in place that prevent that. So that, I don't know how long that would take to do analysis like that, Mr. Towne.
Well, what, what we're talking about now is, is the potential, I mean, for a comprehensive general plan update. As I mentioned earlier, we have recently updated specific books in our library, but, but now what you're talking about, Madam Mayor, is a comprehensive general plan update. That's a, that's a very significant undertaking. It is a general plan amendment, as we've been talking about. But cities that undertake that kind of a comprehensive update, it can be a very considerably long process. I mean, it is, it is important. It takes time. It takes resources to do that. What I could provide perhaps now is that we can provide you, again, with some context for that at, as we bring this, this topic back to you.
I think this is a perfect time.
That would help you to, to make, again, better understand what that would entail in terms of time, resources, and how it could address your concerns.
Yes, well, it's been 21 years since we last looked, or looked at the baseline, 1996. I think now would be a good time to review the general plan again and look at the different and the various zoning. Having, oh, Mr. Price, I see you wanted to weigh in.
Well, yeah, my concern is that we're, we're adding to the staff's work, and while I'm certainly not opposed to taking a look at that $81,000, or 81,000 residential unit baseline, what I'm hearing and what I would imagine is that that would take you the better part of next year to accomplish that. Certainly, many, many months more than I'm willing to wait to get this sort of information that we've already asked for. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yes, it is. Mark, before you chime in, I just wanted to make one quick point here because, make sure it's not getting lost in, in the discussion here. We saw some light blue, we saw some dark blue. The vast majority of that 81,000, that, that number, and you can, it's a good opportunity to reiterate that, is made up of areas that are largely off the table. Is that, is that correct terminology? I'm not a planner, but...
The vast majority of that difference between the number of units in our community and the theoretical maximum per the map is based on the light blue. Those are areas that are developed at a lower density but not the next lower category. They're not subject, they are off the table for any potential general plan amendment because that denotes a change in category, and those did not change category. So, yes, the delta is largely comprised, the majority of it are based on areas that were developed in such a way that those, that, that difference is never accessible.
That's the 5,400 we're talking about.
That brings us back to the dark blue areas, which is the 5,400.
Correct.
No, I understand that about the light blue and that they're off the table. I just wanted to get a realistic baseline. And, and that can be done simultaneously. You can come back with the 20% number that Mr. Fox requested, certainly sooner than that. But I think that this, now, as we're discussing all of this, is a good time to take another look at doing a comprehensive review of, of the general plan. And that will take longer probably, but at least we can get that started. Mr. Adam?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike. Like I said, anyway, I understand what you're saying, and I do think that would be a very long process to accomplish. But there might be an unintended consequence. We need to think about that, you know, as, as it's been brought up here a couple of times. The state is absolutely voracious about getting housing built and very persistent in passing all kinds of legislation, and some of it can take away the independence of a small city like ourselves. So I think that might send a red flag up to the state of California if all of a sudden they hear the Thousand Oaks decided to review the general plan and drop, you know, the amount of houses that could be built. Don't you think?
Well, where would those 32,000 units be built? That's just it. Where would we send, where would we build them?
Well, that's the point.
That's the point.
Where would we build them? So why, I mean, we're not going to. As Mr. Towne said, you know, it's all about location, and those locations are unbuildable. Anyway, I don't mean to, you know, throw off your train of thought there. I just want you to consider ramification from the state because we have had some negative ramification from the state over the years. Loss of redevelopment agency, the granny flat business, you know, the state can be pretty heavy-handed, so I want to be careful of that.
Well, what I would like to say is that, what I would like to offer is that the state can come down and tell us to build more units and more units, but if we can't build them, then what are the consequences, whether that baseline is 81,000 or 61,000? So, I...
Well, they'll make that determination, whether or not you can, and there's language in some of these bills here that have already passed, that, that they will interpret whether or not your handler, processing of that application was done reasonably. And if they determine that it wasn't, then you are going to be fined, and they're going to get built anyway. So I, you know, I don't think there's anybody sitting up here who thinks that 81,000 is a real number. None of us. And I understand that going forward for future councils, because we will never get to that theoretical number in any of our lifetimes. So I think it might be a good discussion, but I don't want to tie that, a comprehensive general plan amendment, to anything that we're doing tonight. That would be counterproductive.
Well, they could get the process started, but they could come back sooner with a report on the 20% units, certainly, with, with suggested locations.
I, I think that given the, the amount of work that we're asking them to do now with this analysis and getting back to us, if you add, and let's remember, there is some interest in development here. There are a number of projects that are being proposed that staff needs to take a look at. I, I don't know that now's the time, and I guess I'll let them answer that.
Are there any more applications? I'm not aware of any.
Well, if I, if I, if I may make a suggestion, staff could provide, again, a framework for a potential use of 20% of the units that we've identified for potential reallocation according to the direction that, that you have just provided us. Concurrently, we can provide the parameters of a comprehensive general plan update so that you know what that would entail, how, how long it would take, again, resources. We cannot provide that immediately, and that is a very significant undertaking. But we can tell you what the parameters are, and I think that will help to freeen the issue. But we would do that concurrently with an analysis of this 20% starting point, this 20% figure, and where, again, where general plan amendments may come from, where units could go theoretically, and, and then bring that back to you for your consideration.
Thank you. I'm curious, I, there has been some, it's been alluded that there are other projects in, in development. What would they be? Because I am not aware of any, other than the two pre-screenings, the last two that came before us.
We, we have continued to have periodic discussions with individuals, entities that are potentially interested in the Nazarbequian property, the pumpkin patch, so to speak, at Thousand Oaks Boulevard in Hoden Camp. We don't have an application in front of us, but I wouldn't be surprised if something comes forward at some point in the future, but we don't have an active application now. That's the only other property that's really been discussed in recent months.
Thank you. I think we have a motion by Mr. Fox, and, and Mr. Fox, you said you would be agreeable to including all the items that I mentioned, including the parameters of a comprehensive general plan analysis, looking at the zoning densities, density ranges, and so forth.
Just a clarification, I have no problem including that, but that's going to be a separate staff, okay, we're good. We're good, yeah.
Do we, are we clear? Do we, are we okay?
We're voting?
Yes, we're voting now.
I got to give you a verbal yes on that. Thank you.
That motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. And I believe we now move to item 13, city manager follow-up items.
Thanks so much, Mayor. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, the 14th of November. There's currently one public hearing that evening for zoning and regulatory regulations for a single medicinal dispensary and a single testing lab. This is follow-up to council's action earlier this year regarding next steps on the implementation of elements of Prop 64 and medicinal marijuana, a single dispensary, a single testing lab. So that will be our single public hearing for the evening, and then the next meeting following that will be after Thanksgiving on the 28th of November.
Thank you. We adjourn today's council meeting in memory of former city employee Norma Colero and also the city's first librarian, Marvin Smith. Marvin Smith, our first city librarian, was named Director of Library Services in 1983 and managed the library until his retirement in 1999. Marvin led his staff in a way that exemplified leadership. He gave energy, commitment, and inspiration to his staff and to others with whom he worked and helped build a premier library from the ground up. Our recently renovated library, Community Room, is named in Marvin's honor. Norma Colero worked at the Thousand Oaks Library as manager of its volunteer program and gift shop. In addition to her role with the city of Thousand Oaks, Norma also served on the board of the Triunfo Sanitation District. Her contributions to the library, beginning in 1987 and spanning over 20 years, were many and varied. She was a major part of the library's growth, and her contributions to both the library and the community will not be forgotten. Our condolences to the families of Marvin Smith and Norma Colero. And with that, we are adjourned until our next council meeting. Thank you, and have a good night.